Okay. Good morning. It is nine o'clock. Welcome to this regular board meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors, May 2nd. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Supervisor Luteweiler will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, begin this morning with report outs from previous board meetings. We will start with our regular meeting of April 18th, closed session. There was one item 5.1 and County Council will report out on that for us.
Thank you. The board met in closed session on one item, Government Code Section 54954.5 Conference with Legal Counsel, Gund versus County of Trinity, and direction was given to staff.
Thank you. Right, from the special meeting, April 24th, closed session, item 1.1, Government Code Section 54954.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation, Number of Cases, One, No Reportable Action. And I had recused that day off of item 1.2, so Vice Chair Luteweiler will report out on that item.
Yes, I reported on item 1.2 as review of County Council Services. By majority vote, the board agreed to the following report out. Chair Cox recused herself from deliberations regarding this matter. The board developed feedback that will be shared with County Council. In-person discussions of the results of the survey and board feedback will take place during closed session on May 2nd. From a historical perspective, County Council agreement calls for performance review. We met on March 7th, March 17th, and March 21st to determine how to move forward with performance review as no template or process was in place. We met on April 4th to finalize a survey template and a list of those who would participate. Board, department heads, and members of staff who work closely with County Council, 48 in total, 34 of whom responded. We met on April 24th to review results of the survey and to formalize board feedback to County Council. We'll meet on May 2nd today to review board feedback, survey results with County Council, and this is anticipated to be an annual process.
Great, thank you. All right, presentations, Board of Supervisors, item 1.1. Receive a presentation from Supervisor Luteweiler, presenting a token of appreciation to interim CEO Letty Garza and interim CEO Liz Hamilton. Supervisor Luteweiler.
Thank you. Yes, I'll make my comments here and then we'll invite Letty and Liz up. First of all, it's really me on behalf of the board and staff. I wanted to take a moment as our new CEO Trent has shown up and and is drinking from the fire hydrant of learning the new job, which is obviously a very, very full-time job. And yet here we have this opportunity to recognize two individuals who took that challenge on, on a part-time basis. And actually, in the midst of their part-time roles, leading our organizations through, they also had to take on roles within our HR department because of a vacancy there. So I think it just is worth note that these individuals stepped up, took on a huge responsibility, and their leadership during that time, we simply wouldn't have been able to carry forward without them. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you and to show that in maybe a little bit of a unique way. I don't have any wheresses and no certifications and so on and so forth. But my lovely bride took some photos that we took of Trinity County, the county that you served in that role, and we fancied them up a little bit. And we've made them custom to each of you, and we'd like to present them to you now. So if you'll join me at the podium. And Board, would you please all join me?
First, Letty. This is, we're following Mountain Lake up there, and it says Trinity County Strong, Letty Garza, May 2nd, 2023. And we already have some people who have signed staff and board and so forth. But if you'll allow us, we'll keep this a little bit longer, let more people sign, and then we'll fancy up. This is actually the front of this. That's what we want you to have, and I hope that you feel through these comments and the time that you spend here, we just appreciate so much what you did for us. And Liz? We can stay up for two because we'll probably get a shot at two. So this is a shot from Liski Town Falls, the 400. And same message, Trinity County Strong, because we really feel like that's what you and Letty both were for us. And again, you have some lovely comments here from the peers and from the board members, and thank you so much for what you did. And Letty, you want to come back up and we'll do a?
I have kids. I know you've got to take like 50 to get a good one.
And one, wait, one more. Trent?
Yes. Because you would be dying right now if they hadn't done this. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, item 1.2, Receive a Presentation from the Executive Leadership Team of Rural County Representatives of California, you've heard RCRC, on the Organization's Strategic Plan and the Work of Their Affiliated Entities. As the alternate to RCRC for two years and now the primary delegate to RCRC on behalf of Trinity County this year, just want to express to you what an incredible advocacy group this is that Trinity County has in being able to belong to such a group. The leadership team there is, there are no words. And I am so pleased. Our Executive Director, Patrick Blacklock, is here with us today to share that strategic plan, give you a sense of the resources that are available to us and the hard, hard work they do in advocating on our behalf. So thank you for being here. Flor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Cox. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Pat Blacklock. I am the CEO at RCRC, and I've been there a little over two years. Prior to that, I was a county administrator for Yolo County for about a decade and before that, Amador County. So come from county land into RCRC, and for me, it's a privilege to be able now to work on behalf of 40 counties. That's RCRC's membership on rural topics and issues. I'm hopeful today, as we go through the presentation, that you'll stop anywhere where you have a question or feedback to provide. Because a big part of the value for me is being informed by what you're experiencing on the ground, and I try to take notes and take that back to the team when we're back in the office. So please don't hesitate to stop me anywhere along the way, and then I'm hopeful that PowerPoint, good to go? Okay. Okay, I'm ready. Yeah, if you want to pop it up, and then you can go ahead and move right to the second slide. RCRC itself is a nonprofit mutual benefit corporation made up of 40 rural counties. And we do two things primarily, and you can see it on the right-hand side of this slide. We're there to be your premier advocate on rural topics and issues, but we're also an innovative service provider for rural communities, helping you achieve some economies of scale. So I'll talk a little bit about that today. About a year and a half ago, we adopted a strategic plan. This slide gives you the highlights of what's in that plan. There's a lot of detail behind it in terms of how we're going to actually do it. But this gives you a sense of the topics, and hopefully there's no surprises in here, broadband, housing, forest resiliency, topics like that are what we spend most of our time working on. Next slide, please. I do want to talk a little bit about our affiliate organizations because we have several. And the first slide speaks to Golden State Finance Authority, which is a joint powers agency, a governmental entity made up of those same 40 counties. And then National Home Buyers Fund, which is an instrumentality of government, but also a nonprofit that does that same work nationally. And really what these two entities do is help people live and thrive in their communities, primarily with helping on homeownership and providing down payment assistance, funding, financing for energy retrofits, multifamily housing. And if you can go to the next slide, I think you got a presentation earlier, maybe on this program. It's the new Assist to Own Program, which is really meant to help county employees purchase homes in your home communities. And our board developed this over the last year with recognition that vacancy rates in counties are higher than they've been, at least during my 20 years around county land, with some counties well over 20%, some departments heading up towards 40%. So this was an effort by our board to find a way to help with recruitment and retention of county employees. Next slide. I did mention at the start that advocacy is a key piece of RCRC. It's really the cornerstone of much of what we do. This slide gives you a sense of the topics. Again, I don't think there's any surprises, broadband, energy. Over the last year and a half, we had several ad hoc committees made up of our Board of Supervisors members who focused on drought and water resiliency, wildfire and forest stewardship, and cannabis regulation. And the goals of those ad hocs was really to update our policy around each of that. And then that informs what we do legislatively. And for example, we sponsored a couple of pieces around cannabis regulation this year to help with illegal grow enforcement. And so the work of the board bringing forward those topics then really drives what we do over at the Capitol. Thought I saw maybe a question coming, but no, okay, I'll keep moving then. One thing I wanted, or Golden State Connect Authority is our newest joint powers agency. It is a governmental entity also, and it is wholly focused on broadband deployment and really doing so in a couple of phases. One is to make sure all of our counties have broadband strategic plans, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. Secondly, was to provide technical assistance to counties to complete broadband planning. And third is to actually deploy an open access municipal system where private providers are either unwilling or unable to do so. And what an open access publicly owned municipal system looks like is to think of it like an airport, where the public entity, in this case, the joint powers agency, comes in and provides, puts fiber to the home, but then opens it up to any private provider who wants to actually deliver internet services. So you would actually still contract with a private ISP. They would use that publicly owned system to deliver internet broadband. And the goal there is really to have multiple options for the consumer in the end to choose from in terms of meeting their broadband need and to get broadband again to rural communities where private providers are either unable with this. We were able to win this traction. The first tranche of funding to come out was for simply designed through the local agency technical assistance. Our goal was to make sure our rural counties were at the front of the line because we knew that funding pot was going to get oversubscribed and relatively quickly. And we didn't want to see our rural communities left behind. And all in all, we were ultimately very successful, and that fund is now oversubscribable to do so. For the majority of our member counties, they're using Golden State Connect Authority to do actual design and engineering. In fact, they're already getting the preliminary designs now are starting to come back. Then they'll move into high-level design and then low-level design and engineering. And the goal being sure is that you're armed with the information you need to help direct where those funds should go and which communities should be served in Trinity County. And I know that you have, we anticipate GSCA could be going out for financing and actually constructing its first projects as early as early 2024. So things are moving at light speed. When you consider that Golden State Connect Authority was formed a little over a year and a half ago, was a brand-new entity at that time. Now it has around a $20 million budget, and by this time next year, could have a $500 million budget, depending on how construction proceeds. We partnered with Utopia Fiber out of Utah. They're the largest publicly owned open access system in the nation. And our goal was to contract with them to take advantage of their expertise so that we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. And we have access to their staff and expertise for actually managing, operating, constructing, et cetera, the system. And I'm happy to say over the course of last month, both agencies approved the master operations agreement, so that is now live. And we feel like we have now the capacity that we need to actually do all that we said we were going to do. So that's Golden State Connect Authority. Very quickly, next slide. One other thing I'll just mention as you go to the next slide is that the broadband strategic plans, of which Trinity is included, we were able to get federal funding to complete those broadband strategic plans. The timing's a little awkward. Initially, we had applied quite some time ago for that federal grant, so the thought was the strategic plan would precede the later grants and engineering. Turned out that by the time the federal government approved that grant, they were happening at the same time. So now we're flying two airplanes while we build them at the same time, but that's okay. It just makes it exciting. And really what the broadband strategic plan is meant to do is stitch together how communities are going to be served, because at the end of the day, we're not going to be able to put fiber in the ground to every home. There's going to be areas that are still going to be needing to serve by wireless. And so the broadband strategic plan should show what that looks like. So it is your doing fiber engineering, you can identify where you need to stub out to be able to have the fiber to serve the wireless that's going to serve the farther out, more remote communities or homes. So all that's happening right now throughout 2023, and all has been funded through either grant work or through the CPUC funds. The next slide. Not any questions on broadband. I'll keep moving. And the next entity I'm going to mention is Rural Alliance Incorporated. This is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. It's been around for quite some time, and it's been dormant for much of its existence. But over the course of the last year, our board said, we really need to do more in terms of education and research on issues of rural import so that we can better inform the legislature and have them, for example, legislators from the LA Bayes and perhaps come out to rural communities and experience and see firsthand the topics that we're discussing. RIA is already planning its first educational tour for legislators in 2023, and they're going to focus on housing, wildfire, and sustainable recreation as topics. And then secondly, as we move forward, next slide. State Natural Resources is also done in terms of intervention in the forest. If we were to have healthy forests and reduce catastrophic wildfire, might partner with the Forest Service to do projects. And ultimately, we are this year completing CEQA and the environmental analysis to continue moving that project forward with the hopes that if we can develop a public-private partnership and complete our environmental analyses, we'll actually reach fruition to have these plants come online, one initially in Lassen County and one initially in Tooleme County, to support, again, more forest projects in those, within those areas. And if we can demonstrate success, then there's the potential that it could be expanded as well beyond that. So 2023 is a pivotal year for this particular project as we move forward. I have one more affiliate entity to mention, I promise, then I'll be wrapping it up. And that is the Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority. This is another governmental entity. And it is focused on waste management and helping rural communities, primarily our smaller rural communities, with waste management compliance through either CalRecycle or the State Water Resources Control Board. ESGPA provides technical assistance with compliance, but also serves as a venue where your waste management directors or your public work directors come together on a regular basis. And they're there and can speak with one voice with CalRecycle or the other regulatory agencies. So I think there's some benefit to that, and economies of scale that is achieved through that as well. ESGPA is made up of, I think it's 27 now rural member counties, so it's a subgroup of our 40, again, primarily the smaller ones focused on achieving economies of scale by working together in the waste management world. So that, that's the, I think I have one more slide that's just the concluding slide. I'm happy to take any questions or if you have any feedback, carry that back. But do want to say thank you for allowing me to share a little bit about RCRC today.
Thank you. Questions and supervisors?
I have a question. First, thank you for making the journey up here. I was just curious, how would, how do you, how do you work with or get in the groups that you just spoke of? Like, for example, the, the natural resources?
Yeah.
How do you, how do you offer your, your skills and talents to that, or how do you engage that group?
Well, they go by the Brown Act, so the meetings are public and they're open, and the next meeting is tomorrow at 1:00. So on the Golden State Natural Resources website, all the information's there. So that's a starting point, is to potentially follow it there. Secondly, its board is a five-member board made up of the RCRC and Golden State Finance Authority Board. So it's a subset of our county supervisors who are on it and who are participating. And lastly, don't hesitate to reach out to me. If you see something of specific interest to you, don't hesitate to call or text or email, and happy to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I mentioned that I'm working on the CSAC side of things, and one of the things that came out of our recent meetings was highlighting the work towards the, let me find it here, National Center for Public Lands Counties. Are you familiar with that?
I am, yes.
Okay. So as I was hearing what you were describing about some of the organizations that you work with as affiliates to RCRC, they're not directly doing the same things, but there's certainly overlap. So do you see that those will work together, or are they just completely separate entities and efforts?
I think complementary is the word I would use to describe the efforts. Graham, for example, and myself try to meet regularly to ensure our efforts are tracking together and complementary. So hopefully we are leveraging each other, even where that may seem like there's duplication. We try to stay coordinated. And so, for example, I mentioned we had an ad hoc committee around fire and fire resiliency. We had our CSAC colleague in the room for those meetings so that we could stay, again, supportive and complementary to work through it. The National Public Lands work through NACO. CSAC's sort of the lead here in California in terms of getting the word out, sharing information. But we attend the NACO's Public Lands Committee meetings. We'll be at the Western Interstate Region that NACO helps support in two weeks. So it's all, I would say, it's not overlap or duplicative, but rather complementary.
Okay, that's one of the things, and for the benefit of the folks watching, the, this is focused on in part doing research to help us counties that are often, often have a lot of public land help understand how do we manage that and how do we manage our relationships and get from the entities who own those lands the, the income that a county deserves because we can't get our normal way of getting income from those, those lands.
Yeah.
And.
Trinity County's been a leader with the Secure Rural Schools, and then obviously Pilte is another piece of it. So I suspect that they're going to be a big focus on those two efforts and trying to find a sustainable funding source so that we're not every year trying to see those funds come forward. And again, it's, it's all hands on deck, whether it's CSAC or RCRC or NACO, we're all working together on that front.
That's something that we'll probably have on our board agenda here soon because looking for a decision from each county about funding, and we have not made that decision.
Right.
Thank you for your feedback.
Other questions? All right, Patrick, thank you again for being here. Safe travels home and see you soon.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. All right, item 1.3, Health and Human Services. Adopt a proclamation of appreciation, which recognizes the month of May 2023 as CalFresh Awareness Month. And I believe Director Hamilton will be receiving this when we are finished. A Resurrection of the Board of Supervisors, the County of Trinity, CalFresh Awareness Month. Whereas the California Department of Social Services has proclaimed May as CalFresh Awareness Month. And whereas access to safe and nutritious food is a basic human tenet and is essential to human health. And whereas food security is the foundation of a strong and healthy community. And whereas one in five Trinity County residents are receiving vital food assistance support through the CalFresh program. And whereas CalFresh spurs the local economy with $455,631 spent in Trinity County during the month of March 2023. And whereas community partners and local leaders engage with the community to provide awareness of CalFresh and promote this program. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity proclaims May 2023 CalFresh Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that Health and Human Services urges all community members to support efforts to increase awareness of and participation in the CalFresh program, duly passed and adopted this second day of May 2023 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Someone care to make a motion?
So moved?
I will second that.
Motion made by Supervisor Luteweiler, second by Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Luteweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Frasier?
Aye.
Aye.
Good morning, Chair and Board. Mike Cattone, Deputy Director for HHS. I just want to thank you for taking up this proclamation. This will be the kickoff for our efforts to increase education and outreach around the CalFresh program. As you noted in the proclamation, this program serves a lot of folks in Trinity County with a lot of economic benefit in addition to the food assistance that people are getting. And so we just want to get the word out. You can see that we have, you know, about 20% of our population served. But I also want to highlight that for our population of folks, older adults and adults with disabilities that represent a significant proportion of our population countywide, they are underrepresented in the CalFresh population, so we want to get the word out. So anybody that wants to apply, you can call us, you can come into the office, you can go on to our website, the county website, and find out how to apply. So we want to make it really easy. But thank you for doing this, and we'll be pushing lots of stuff out to social media and in the community to get the word out. So, thank you.
Excellent. Our privilege to support, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. All right. All right, item 1.4, Sheriff. Adopt a proclamation recognizing the week of May 7 through 13, 2023, as Correctional Officers Week. Sheriff Saxon will be here to receive. He has his undersheriff and deputies. Thank you. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, welcome. Gentlemen, thank you for all. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors, welcome, gentlemen. Thank you for all you do. A proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity, recognize the week of May 7 through 13, 2023 as National Correctional Officers Week. Whereas on May 5th, 1984, President Ronald Reagan issued proclamation 5187, National Correctional Officers Week, in which he called, quote, "upon officials of state and local governments and the people of the United States to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and activities," end quote. To recognize, quote, "the contributions of correctional officers to our nation," end quote. And whereas President Reagan was the first president to formally recognize the great work of those in this profession and the very difficult and at times dangerous nature of corrections work. He wrote that correctional officers are, quote, "essential to the day-to-day operations of these institutions. Without them, it would be impossible to achieve the foremost institutional goals of security and control," end quote. And whereas corrections professionals know all too well the risks and challenges associated with the work they do. We need to take time this week to congratulate our brothers and sisters in the field for their successes in protecting the public. And whereas corrections professionals put their health, safety, and lives on the line every day to maintain public safety, to reform and rehabilitate our nation's offenders and perform many other duties. Our highly devoted corrections personnel do more than guard offenders. They treat, counsel, train, teach, and rebuild lives. They give hope. Whereas we commend all those who serve or have served in and throughout the corrections profession this past year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity do hereby proclaim the week of May 7 through 13, 2023 as National Correctional Officers Week duly passed and adopted the second day of May 2023 by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. Could I have a motion, please?
I will make a motion that we accept this.
I'll second.
Motion by Supervisor Carpenter Harris, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lootweiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Frasier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
With a mix.
Thank you very much, um, on, on behalf of the Trinity County Sheriff's Office and the men and women, uh, serving in the Trinity County Detention Facility. I'd like to thank you very much for, uh, the proclamation and for recognizing the hard work and dedication of the Trinity County Sheriff's Office. I have a couple of representatives here of the, uh, of the correctional facility. And I just want to let you know that, uh, they work hard each and every day, uh, protecting, uh, the inmates of the facility as well as the communities here in Trinity County. It's becoming more and more difficult every day with the state of California closing facilities in the state and releasing populations and, and making it more and more of a burden on each one of the counties in the state of California. And these men and women, a couple of representatives here today, working harder and harder uh, with individuals who were not meant to be in county jails, who are meant to go to state prison. And, uh, and, and they're working hard to rehabilitate as much as we can here and protect them, uh, in our facility. So I thank you very much for recognizing their hard work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go get that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, um, item 1.5, Treasure Tax Collector. We were to receive an overview today, but, uh, Terry McBrayer is not able to be with us. So this will be postponed to a future agenda. Um, Ashley, did you need five? All right, we will now move into public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are intended, are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter, may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department or follow up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. And so, uh, just to help, to be clear, uh, this public comment is limited only to items on the open session, not closed session. You will have opportunity for that at that time. So the floor is open if there's anyone who would like to make public comment.
Good morning, uh, Chair members of the board, uh, Jake Grossman, Chris Hayfork. Thought the sheriff was here to arrest somebody. I, uh, I, I, I'm a little bit at a loss of words, but I want to share a perspective that I think is probably unique to me and maybe only my wife in this county. In 2018, uh, our home was raided, um, on the word of our county staff that we had been doing improper behavior with, uh, board members. Um, the planning department was raided. After that, uh, the FBI came to my home without a warrant and smashed through our gate. We were then charged by the county with trumped up charges that took three years to get dismissed. The federal prosecutor in Sacramento, who has been known for cases such as, uh, busting corruption in the NYPD and senators. During COVID, he got so sick of getting calls from our attorney, looking for all of the evidence in our case and our discovery that was our right to have. He said, "I will be returning this to Trinity County. Please do not ever call me again. The only crimes I can see committed there are the atrocities done by a bunch of idiots." I heard today somebody say Trinity's strong. That's the people behind me. I would say that the track record for the last six years, and I know there's exceptions to every rule, but the people in front of me would be Trinity wrong. I would ask everybody in this room, in this board to dig deep and realize that you all took an oath to look out for the people standing behind me. I know that that's not the norm in this country, to look out for the citizens, for elected officials to actually do what they took an oath for. But there's a lot of frustration. Um, I, I would love to see somebody stand up and take the initiative that was taken against me. Years and years later, I still haven't received any of my stuff back from that raid. I don't even have my laptop with the photographs of my kids when they were babies. I don't have the money back that was taken. This is all very real stuff. That was all very not real stuff. So I hope that people take this seriously because guns getting pointed at your kids, gates getting crashed, the FBI, federal prosecutors, having to get a babysitter so my wife and I can go check into Trinity County Jail. Those are all real things. That all came from very unreal things. So when there's real things out there, there should be real consequences. Not real consequences for made up things. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Morning, Board. Uh, my name is Jennifer Hill. I'm a resident of Douglas City. I've lived here for over 10 years. I've, uh, I'm raising a family here. I have two boys. I volunteered in the past for multiple years at the Douglas City Firebells. Uh, you know, I love this community. I'm also a business owner. To me, this, this issue is appalling. And I'm speaking as a concerned citizen that we need change. We need the rules and the laws to be upheld here. Otherwise, I fear we're just a bunch of cavemen being farmed. The law only applies to you unless you're a select few of the ruling class. I hope that's not the case. I'm speaking to the patriots here. If you're a patriot, this is for you. If you have an allegiance to Trinity County, if you're a true patriot, if you care about the well-being of our community and the access to free markets, I am speaking to you. It seems like those with vested interest in our natural resources are teaming up here. This corporate takeover of small towns is stuff I would read about in my college textbooks, but I'm not reading it. I'm living it. I've watched as countless families come before this board, plead, beg, tell you they're hungry, tell you there's no food for their bellies. And you guys kind of just dismiss them, kind of didn't really take it seriously. Instead of having a prosperous, thriving economy that we could, that's so close in sight, we have the opposite. Stop economically killing us, economically choking us out because you don't want political opposition. The poorest county in California. I understand cannabis threatens these people. I most certainly understand they don't like it as I have been at the forefront of this war. This war of killing the small family farm that so desperately now wants to be licensed, wants to do the right thing, to be transparent and be a contributing member of this society, not just society, this community. This community we all call home. To help grow our economy, we have to do what's right for our county. I'm tired of the few thinking they can control the money. Help us once again prosper and grow Trinity County into the flourishing economy it can be. We all want the same thing here, people. We all, we all want money to be here. We want our schools to be strong, keeping us poor, keeping us broke and fragile and dependent. That's not what we want. So that's what these corporations want, though. Let's keep one of the last free counties in California free. I hope an example is made of this situation so no one new can walk onto the scene thinking they can do this without any repercussions. We need to be fierce in our independence, shaping our own economy here. We need to cut this cancer out so we can flourish as a society. These few people have personally ruined lives with their anti-cannabis agenda. How is it okay that someone in active litigation can be on our general plan updates, writing board agendas? It's mind blowing, being CC'd on every issue. I want to thank Shanna, Colleen, and Terry for coming out with this information. These are the kind of patriots we need in this community with their selfless actions. You know, on me, on my part, it looks like a coordinated effort to stifle the cannabis industry. We're just asking for transparency here. If not, the same thing will keep happening. Cannabis growers have been made political martyrs of this whole time. How come there's a double standard now? And I quote from Jim's email.
I'm gonna have to have you stop. Thank you.
Adrian Keyes from Hayfork, uh, Chair, Supervisors. Pretty uncomfortable in here these days. I'm not even sure where to go with this. I, I definitely did my due diligence, reading as much as I could through the emails that were released. Um, no smoking guns, lot of questions, more questions than I can answer. I would request that the board initiate, uh, an investigation into, um, what appears to be some conflicts of interest, possibly some, some other ethics violations, particularly around, um, the apparent threat to intimidate TOT recipients into, into sponsoring a tax initiative that was initiated by the county. Attempting to depose of a public employee without, like specifically without having to do an RFP or, and without having to report out a closed session on it. We try so hard to get work done in this room and I just, I'm at a loss as to how we're going to move forward from this point. It's, I've been hoping metaphorically the clouds would blow away and that we'd have sun again in, in this room. And it's just, it's, the trust has been shattered once again. And I think it, in order to be an effective board, this matter needs to be thoroughly investigated. Um, staff reports written for both the supervisors and for Trinity Public Utilities District by a lawyer who's actively litigating against the county. Please take these considerations seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Shanna White. Uh, I am a county resident and I'm also the clerk, recorder, assessor for Trinity County. Um, I would like an agenda item to be placed on an upcoming meeting to evaluate Jill Cox and remove her from any committees that she's on and remove her as chair. Um, I, I speak as a department head here and hope that these people behind me don't judge me and the rest of my colleagues based on the actions of Jill Cox. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Pamela Lynn, recent move in from Southern California. And I'm here to stand in the gap for Jill Cox and the things that she has done for the people of this community. It is well-known and publicly seen the things that she has done to help the people of this community in this county. Now, some people that work within this government here might be of a different note. But I believe that, um, she stands as a woman of integrity and is concerned about the people, compassionate about serving the people. For those who want to cause trouble, then let facts be known. Please research and find out who's telling the truth and who is being slanderous and using the government here in Trinity County to slander people without proof. Sounds very familiar to other government entities in our United States of America. But let facts, proof, be known before slander and judgment comes to anyone. If one is going to choose to attack Jill Cox, I'm afraid that the rest of this board is then again going to have the same thing happen to them. Which is a shame. So I hope that people will research and come to conclusions with facts, not made up stories and lies. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Marie Peterson, District One. I don't know if that lady read the hundreds of emails that we've all read. I don't know if any of you guys have. It's extremely disturbing. I'm guessing she hasn't seen them. Um, I'd like to humbly ask the rest of you, um, to fully investigate and remove Jill as the chair. We need somebody who can lead our county, somebody who demonstrates integrity. And I have faith that any one of you would do a better job of that than Jill would. She's clearly demonstrated that she lacks the experience and ability to be the chair of our board. We don't need a chair that is inappropriately sharing confidential county information over and over with her puppeteer, Jim Underwood, who is an active case with the county at this point. It's just wrong, Jill, and you know it. And I'm actually shocked that you're so brazen to get up here after all this has been released. The smartest thing you could do would be to step down. You guys, we really, really need you to stand up for the people and stand up for what's right. And, uh, you know, look into the emails yourself. Um, support the people, support the staff, because right now we're losing staff because of Jill's appointee. We're watching them be bullied in planning commission meetings by Commissioner Sharp. This cannot continue. It's extremely upsetting and I want to believe that you guys will help us through this because I don't want to have to leave and I want this place to prosper. I'm sick of seeing it impoverished and Jill, you are driving us into more poverty.
Thank you.
Investigate and remove her as the chair. We need somebody to do better than this.
Thank you.
Go ahead and bring my notes. My glasses. My name is Veronica Kelly Albeis from Douglas City. And, um, I want to start this by saying I have the utmost respect and acknowledge the hard work of our county employees, supervisors, and county council. And I've watched over the years, many board members be accused of this type of behavior. And I've always gone looking for the proof and I was told, go check out the agenda item. And I did. And as usual, my expectations were too high. I was disappointed, well, not really, but disappointed to find no substance to these accusations. They were work notes and they were, they're tidbits for tantal, you know, to make tantalizing, um, conversation. But there was nothing in there that isn't part of what I'd imagine all of you doing, making notes for a meeting. Um, I, I didn't see anything inappropriate or illegal. I saw stuff that was super awkward. I'm pretty sure I wouldn't want to read some of my past employers' notes on me. I'm kind of strong-willed. I'm kind of strong willed. But where was the offer of employment for Jim Underwood? Where are the hundreds, if not thousands of emails that we keep hearing about? I haven't seen them. Please do. I love that. Put a link up because I've been looking. I haven't found them. And if that isn't being widespread to the, all of the public, why is that? How was someone able to get up here and discuss who witnesses are in a grand jury? Or who has, um, you know, all kinds of those things that are normally private. I'm not a lawyer, but I play one at home like everybody else in the room. But I'm not someone you necessarily want running your legal department. So I understand the hard work that Margaret puts in and her firm puts in. But there are a lot of questions. And as any employer would do, you sit down and you ask them. You evaluate. But I want to know why there does seem to be a small group that can, that has all this information, but the general public does not. The coincidence and timing for all of this does not go unnoticed. I can add coinkydinks pretty quickly. Maybe not math in my head, but coinkydinks I'm good with. Have you ever seen the movie Wag the Dog? It's a really good movie, Dustin Hoffman, love him, recommend it. It's certainly feeling like a Wag the Dog moment. I have so much more to say, but, and I support PRA requests. I've done them. There are people in this county that have been waiting for theirs to be answered. Block out the noise. Do the hard work. Figure it out together. But block out the noise, block out the non, the nonsense. Investigate, look at things. But realize what things are and what the coincidences are in this situation. And I've been accused of being extra and a drama queen my whole life. Several people are earning their scepters in this situation. And just block out the noise, don't wag the dog. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Sidman, Lewiston. Thank you, supervisors and staff, for doing what you do. I come to you today without any accusations or allegations, but with questions, serious questions about the integrity and transparency of our county government. The body of emails shows a tremendous influence by special interests into many different facets of our county governance. I call on the board to make public all of the emails and attachments that were released as part of the FOIA request so that everyone can see them for themselves. Based on reading these emails, I have the following questions for you. Is it proper for a supervisor to get legal advice from an outside attorney without disclosure? Is it proper for a supervisor to BCC outside counsel when emailing county council and staff? Is it proper for a county supervisor to advocate for a private party project to other agencies as her role as board president? Is it proper? Should a supervisor disclose membership in special interest groups when voting on related measures? Is it proper for a supervisor to BCC outside counsel on items listed for your eyes only when sent to the board? I don't know all the rules and ins and outs, but I know an appearance of impropriety when I see it. Outside influencers and special interests are providing specific language that is then carried to these very chambers. It isn't transparent, it isn't right, and only you, board, can do something about it today. For as many as you see here today, there are many others who are afraid to be here for fear of retribution. I read a lot of, I read a lot of the emails and it's evident that Supervisor Cox is a good-hearted, community-minded person who is kind to her friends. I was surprised to read what she said about one of my friends who serves on the Trinity Arts Council. I'm quoting Supervisor Cox. Yes, Carla, who subsequently beat me up in public when she doesn't even live in Weaverville. That Carla. So yes, I'm a little irritated that they can't seem to get on board and help bolster the account from which funds are handed to them. If they don't get on board and if the increased TOT doesn't pass, I say, take their funding. If they want to play hardball, I guess that's their choice. I've lived here for seven years and I know that makes me a newcomer. CAO Tut Hill. You're a newcomer as well. What you hear here today isn't the worst of it. It isn't the last of it. It is indicative of it. Please know that you're not hearing the endorsed current county council. Someone should be asking why this FOIA request was implemented so quickly, why it wasn't redacted, and lots of other questions. Someone should be asking those questions. I'm counting on you today. I'm counting on you, Chairman Frazier. I'm counting on you, Chairman Lottweiler.
Thank you, your time is up.
Counting on you, Gogan. I'm counting on you, Carpenter Harris. Um, I'd like these submitted to the record.
Scott White, Lewiston. To the new lady, I've known Jill Cox for 30 years. Her oldest son was the ring bearer in our wedding. I attended her son's wedding. And it really sucks for me to stand up here today and do this, but I'm going to do it because I do have the guts to do it. I stand before you today as one of Jill Cox's victims. I hadn't looked at anything the board had done since we got screwed when majority of the board believed lies on March 3rd. Yesterday, a friend said they had seen my name in some email released by the county and sent me a copy. My friend then sent me more, much more, and I am appalled. The email disclosed that Jill chose to speak with Jim Underwood about us and our land use project, despite knowing that Jim was an attorney, our attorney for part of that time. I think that's not inappropriate. How much else they talked about, it's clear some email are not included in that chain. How much else they talked about when he is our attorney? I have no idea what they talked about. We may never know. In public, Jill says she relies on county staff. You nailed me on March 3rd saying county staff. The released emails show in fact that you rely continuously on Jim Underwood, going so far as to have him recommend actions and draft staff reports. As the public noted, she is relying on an outside attorney for guidance, one that helped get her elected and intimately involved. He's a rotary sponsor, not relying on county council. At a minimum, her actions are unethical and they're probably quite a bit more. We have an opportunity to address this. If we choose to band together and seek justice, the rest of the board should demand an investigation, so should we. And by the way, somebody mentioned smoking guns. Boy, let's go because I have a lot of smoking guns on you, Jill. Let's get her.
Thank you. Ashley, are there any comments on Zoom?
I have.
We'll take the Zoom call since we said we would, so give us a moment.
Andrew Franklin, Junction. From Junction City. And I'm calling and, uh, you know, I, I kind of quit going to these meetings because I called this out from the beginning. I told everybody what was happening. Nobody believes me. Everybody's jealous, hates me, whatever. Terry doesn't tell the truth. Oh, but that's actually quite the actual truth. The unfortunate part here is that what Jill Cox was trying to do by addressing the Margaret Long Prentice council, in my opinion, was correct. They do need to go. But what she did was double down on unethical behavior. And instead of getting rid of somebody, in my opinion, that has hurt our county for 15 years already, she had to double down and be even more unethical. This is exactly where our county desperately needs cleaned up of. This, this craziness, nepotism, people saying she's a good person when she's absolutely proven. The emails are there. There's no more lying. The facts are in front of everyone's face. Give credit to Ms. Shanna White, please, county. Understand what kind of quality person you have there. We need people like her to help lead this county, honest, truthful, care about this county. Ms. Cox, please resign immediately. I think anyone else that's involved, you need to resign also immediately. I'm calling in on the state to come in now. State and feds. This is way, none of these people are clean that can investigate this internally. This has to come from outside the county at this point. There has to be a lot of PRAs. Obviously, LA Times didn't get all they need. We're going to have to have them come back and redo what they're going to do here. This is absolutely so appalling. And this is the crux of democracy. And you guys have just destroyed the integrity of the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County. And I said this from day one. They were all Jim Underwood puppets, only Liam has proven not to be. So that is what I say. This is my opinion. But now we can't even do anything. We are in such a quagmire. We can't even clean up the prior county council mess. And yes, I have a PRA, went to trial. I'm still going to get my emails. I don't care if I have to appeal, if I have to file more. Our county needs cleaned up once and for all. Please, Governor, come in.
Thank you. David Albeez, just a minute, we're going to take the gentleman in the room. David, give us one moment. Go ahead, sir. Gentleman in the room, yes, thank you.
Andrew Franklin, Junction City. And I read a number of the emails between Supervisor Cox and Jim Underwood. I heard the comments from two of our longest tenured and most respected county department heads, Terry McGray and Shanna White, two of Jill's female colleagues. These are her coworkers aboard. These are other department heads that felt obligated to come speak last week and to talk about this. Two former county supervisors came to speak and talk about this scandal. So I felt obligated as a Trinity County citizen to come here today and ask Supervisor Cox to resign amidst this scandal and let us try to clean it up. If you somehow feel that you don't need to resign, I request that you immediately schedule a town hall and explain your actions to the people of the county. Get up in front of the people. No Zoom, not online, in front of the people. The CD hall is available for these kind of events. And then let us ask you questions about your actions. Right face to face, person to person. If you feel you're in the right, get up there on that stage and explain yourself, please. Because the county is going to go through a lot. It seems to me when you raised your hand and put your, put your other hand on the sacred book, that you lied to the people of Trinity County, that you had nefarious intentions from the beginning. And we deserve an explanation for your actions to this point in your short career here in public service. So thank you, board.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Belanco, Douglas City. I was just in the back of the room perusing these emails and I keyed in on my birthday, October 3rd, 2022. And there was an email inquiring about a potential Brown Act violation from Jill to County Council Margaret Long that BCCs Jim Underwood. That's number one. Any attorney who got an email like that should be shocked. Number two, it devastates the attorney-client privilege that otherwise would exist. And it, it's a, it's an event. So that, I'm not saying it's a smoking gun, but it's, it's a significant departure. I also noticed several that I didn't get to read yet, but all headed Class K. So I would reiterate my call from a few weeks ago for the Building Department Appeals Panel. Because part of those emails are Jim Santiago. I don't know if his opinions speak for the Building Department, but there are enough discretionary questions in our new ordinance, limited density rural dwellings, like foundations sufficient to support the weight or roof slope sufficient to shed snow, that we don't want to put that all on one person. There should be a map, a method for appealing rather than bringing it all back here. So I know the focus is on, is on one thing, but I do want to bring it back to something else as well. So I do hope we get, even if it means, like I said, designating the planning commission as the Building Department Review Board. Let's get that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, uh, my name's Buck Steele, resident Trinity County for 43 years. Been here a while and have experienced a lot of what's going on in this room right now. And there's something that I've observed over the years, and that is those who are appointed to public office as public servants to the county, to their citizenship. Something shifted. And what's shifted is going from public servant to public controller, public ruler, public boss. And for 43 years, I've, I've seen that shift to where whatever happened to the public servant mentality. And that comes down from Washington. Where's the public servant? And those of you who sit in judgment of your team and yet practice in the very things that you censor and denounce, how are you, how do you expect to get anything done? If you're just going to devote your time and your energy to fighting with each other? And my heart is that you just figure it out. Figure out how to be a team player. Stop throwing rocks at your team members. And get over your stuff. And humble yourselves. And just figure out how I can return to being a public servant instead of a public boss, controller. That's the answer. The answer is not rocks being thrown at your team members. That's happened since I've been here, 43 years. I've heard it over and over and over again. You know, just the, uh, the whole mindset of caring enough about the community that you're willing to drop your rocks and start working as a team in humility to figure out what it's going to take to be the servant instead of the boss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Travis Finch. And I just wanted to say that I've known Jill Cox for probably 30 years, both personally and professionally. And I've always known her to be very thorough. And I think that is reflected in some of these emails that were dispersed. And I didn't see anything inappropriate there. But what was inappropriate was the way in which they were made public. And I think that needs to be looked into. Personnel information is not supposed to be made public in public records requests. And either county council was unaware of that, in which case they should be terminated for cause. Or it was done with the intent to discredit Jill. And that's also a reason to be terminated with cause. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? David Albeez.
Okay, thank you very much, David Albeez from Douglas City. First, change of subject for a much better cause. I just wish to, as the Golden Age Center President of the Board and runner of the Blue Barn, manager, et cetera. I'm one of three board members who do all of the work voluntary to keep the Golden Age Center open. And CalFresh and the Food Banks have been a partner with the Golden Age Center to feed seniors throughout the entire COVID-19 crisis. So it's, it's been absolutely amazing, their support.
Their support for the community and our seniors worked well together. And we fed over 60 seniors throughout the entire COVID-19. That's more than multiple counties can say, who were shut down completely and were unable to support their, their seniors. In that vein, Jill Cox also, and through her leadership, provided PSA2 funds for, that were lost for the last two and a half years due to COVID, and helped feed upwards of 100 seniors with meals five days a week. She worked hard at that. I was on the PSA2 board with her and couldn't believe the absolute professionalism and joy to help the community. I've read through the emails, folks, and there's nothing but a diligent supervisor trying to get to the bottom and find the right answers and the right procedures to ensure that she keeps everybody informed of everything that's going on. I saw nothing nefarious or any decision-making process. That wasn't directed toward providing that same information to the Board for deliberations on a, on a council that she had lost faith in. And there's nothing wrong with going to a lawyer that, that is willing to pro bono advice rather than cost the county huge amounts of money. And that's all that was, was advice. There's no attempt to make Jim the county council as evidence in the emails, et cetera, as accused of another witch hunt. She is nothing but diligent and nothing but Brown Act savvy. So I know it's just another attempt to get rid of Jill because she's not of the ilk of a minority of folks. So thank you, Jill, for all your hard work. And I'm so sorry you're having to go through all this. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Moody.
Hi, my name is Nicole Moody. I'm from Weaverville. And I would like to say that Jill Cox stands for the people, not for the good old boys who are being called out. She's brave. And the real people of this community need to hear, need her to stand up for the ones not in this clique of this good old boy system. This is a shame, such a shame, to deflect the truth about the people who have done wrong instead call out the one who is willing to stand up against the ones stealing homes by foreclosures and so much other shady stuff happening. The county has so many other important issues that should be focused on, but instead, the good old boys are trying to get away with their behavior and criminal activity by deflecting and redirecting attention to her. Jill stands for the people and the community loves her. The Board should do the right thing and stand for the people and keep her where she belongs. Thank you.
Thank you. Rhoda Kane.
Hi, this is Rhoda Kane. I'd just like to, you know, I'm going to talk about the same thing. But there's obviously corruption in this county. And if, if everybody thinks that there is no investigation is necessary, then I have to wonder why. I agree, the timing of this may be suspicious. But this, I don't know what it's about, but I do know that it's not about cannabis. This is about the appearance of inappropriate behavior. I, I appreciate the courage of county staff that came forward to speak on this subject. I also have read some of the emails. I also think that the emails should be released so that everybody can read them. I think maybe they should go up on the website or wherever. But yes, everybody needs to read them. And then with all the attachments, I think that maybe until the investigation is completed, Chairman Cox maybe should be removed from her committee assignment and remove the chair until the investigation is complete. I, I, there are, you know, emails that are confidential for your eyes only that have been, you know, flying carbon copying outside council on county communications. I believe it's a clear violation of law. Not disclosing membership in a special interest group is an SDC violation. This is, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, but I do know that I think everybody needs to have the same information and we need to release those emails and we need to make sure that we remove the appearance of conflict of interest and we do a full investigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Dick Morris. I live in Weaverville in Trinity County. I'd like to address some of the remarks that are made about your chairman, Jill Cox. The position of Chair of an organization can often require unexpected attention. Forgive me for relating my own personal experience, but as a former board member and president of several large organizations, including the California Retail Hardware Association, the Northwest Public Power Association, and 40 years as a PUD board member, majority of those as president, many challenges, challenging issues have come my way. In response to the recent grand jury's blistering analysis of the poor advice given and the questionable billings provided by your county council, Chairperson Cox has dutifully acted by speaking, seeking advice and potential options from knowledgeable advisors and District 2 residents. One would assume the results of those insights would be shared with her fellow board members during or prior to Margaret Long's long overdue performance evaluation. What has been characterized as the worst Trinity County scandal in living memory is really better known as Sour Grigs. The greatest scandal for Trinity County would be the failure of your board to, the failure to respect and act on the findings of the grand jury report, calling out the questionable, preternous long advice and costs borne by our county. I urge you to get this behind you. Move on. Work towards making this the place we truly love and live for our kids, our child, our children, our grandchildren. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Bill Sharp, District 2 resident and District 2 Planning Commissioner. I've come here today just, just to, you know, echo what Mr. Morris just said. And I'd just like to take a second to thank Dick for all your years of service and commitment to our community. It's, it's not unnoticed and I love you for it. So, thank you, Dick. You know, to speak to the matter of emails and people's personal notes, anybody here that wants to judge somebody on their emails and personal notes, knock yourself out. Good luck with that. It's just that, it's notes. What I really want to speak to today is not that. It's the grand jury report and the lack of this board and its commitment to at least scrutinize and look at that report and not make comments to a person's report who volunteered to do what we're required to do as a community, which is to do a grand jury report. But yet to call them names, accusers, you have a right to face your accuser like they're putting somebody on trial. They're not. They're providing you a report to review. Your lack of review of that report, you do at your own peril. And it creates issues like we have today. The grand jury called out obvious issues with our county council that anybody that reads the Trinity Journal would quite frankly understand and see and would not need an attorney to tell them that our attorney probably isn't winning. We have lost case after case. We have made bad decision after bad decision in this county, which has brought us here today. We have industry fighting residents, residents fighting industry. And all this has been done on that attorney's watch. Where are we, Trinity County? Nowhere further along than we were in 2016, when maybe our attorney should advised us to do SEQA, to get community input prior to bringing in a controversial industry into our community. But none of that was done. In fact, it was advised not to do SEQA. Not to do SEQA to the point where we will pay tens of thousands of dollars to not do SEQA. And here we are, sitting here today, again, right back at square one. People not wanting to do SEQA, not wanting to do what we're supposed to do as laws. What I would suggest that we do here today is review county council's contract. Make a decision based on merit, not on conjecture, not on notes, but on merit. I sat before the Planning Commission on last Thursday night to find out that the county council does not have a contract to sit on the Planning Commission during those meetings.
Bill.
During those meetings, we don't have counsel. Why? Because her contract hasn't been reviewed.
Bill, I have to call your time.
Thank you.
Darrell Davis.
Hi there, Darrell Davis, Junction City. Yeah, I was listening to the last three speakers and it occurred to me, the third one ago and then coincidentally, the good old boys became the next two commenters. We all know that Dick Morris most likely hired attorney Jim Underwood to represent PUD. We could also practically guess that Dick Morris of TAA, same guy, hired same guy attorney Jim Underwood to represent them, who in turn sued the county. Yet Jim Underwood is all over the county. He works for the county in other aspects here and then is BCC over and over on all kinds of issues. Do I have to explain the conflict of interest that's going on here? This has to be investigated. It is clear conflict of interest. So that's what I'm asking here, is to look into this, the rest of the board, please. We do need some integrity here in this county. I guess that's about it. Please have some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa.
Thank you, Chair, Board members, Lisa Wright-Lewis. And, you know, we've heard a lot this morning. I, I did not take the time and energy to go through the emails and look for smoking guns. I think there's certainly some questions about ethics. And I also do understand, and I've spoken, you know, with Jill personally, about concerns that, you know, regarding the advice that might be given by our current county council. But I think that engaging with someone who's in litigation with the county as your advisor is kind of where it, it really went wrong. And using, you know, county email and also, you know, comments regarding your retaliation towards people for comments that they might be making. It's really unfortunate. But I think, you know, there's questions kind of on both sides here now, right? We have questions about county council, we have grand jury, we have, that's coming up on another agenda item, performance review. We have questions now about the ethics and any laws that may have been broken by our chair. What about looking at hiring an outside independent third party? You know, whether it's a mediator, a retired judge, sorry, not, not Judge Lynn, that could come in and take away some of, I want to say the, you know, the pressure on county council, but also on, on the board. County council likely should not be reviewing the PRA, the Public Record Request Acts, for issues pertaining to her and her firm, right? So it's just kind of removing that appearance of impropriety, taking it up to another level for the investigation. I don't know if laws were broken, I don't know. But I think that that would protect the community and the board to kind of take it out of this and move it up here to, to some kind of third party, whether it's an arbiter, mediator, retired judge, outside council, maybe specializing in these type of issues. I'm sure there's someone out there. So that's just my two cents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. Chair Cox, Dana Howser from Hayfork. I remember that Jill wanted, Jill ran her campaign on transparency and funding the planning department. And BCCing, litigating attorneys and all the things we've heard about today do not stand for tran- trans, do not stand for transparency. And what I find most concerning about all this is the fear of retribution and what has kept many people from speaking today and has, over the course of time, kept people from speaking in general. I am here already enough that I think that the negative impacts are going to be stacked against me one way or the other because I am perceived and judged in a certain way because I'm in the cannabis industry. And I don't think this is about cannabis. I think this is about ethics and morals and judgment. I believe that Jill believes she's a good person. I think it's just misguided. And when you want something so bad and when you're willing to sacrifice your values to get it and lie and squirm and twist things to make it okay to where you can sleep at night and you can feel righteous, that's the issue to me. I know that everyone is not like me. And I try hard every day to live an honest life. That, I know that seems to many that they can't understand that. Like someone that likes to smoke as much weed as I am can be a good person, but it's true. Again, it's not about that. It's about judgment. And someone that's willing to twist the rules to get what they want regardless of the consequences is not transparent. And it's what people hate about politics. And it really concerns me that our local politics can be rammed this way because it makes people disinterested in untrust, like the distrust in government. And, and it's what people hate about politics. But this is our community and it affects many specific community members that are in this room and in our little basket. Unfortunately, it's not surprising. But, yeah, it's disappointing. And I don't know. I think that town hall would be really great. Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anna Letky, resident of Weaverville. I, I do just want to say, I, I love what Dana just said about twisting politics, getting I, I do just want to say, I, I love what Dana just said about twisting politics, getting bits of information and twisting it to make what you think you want to do. Um, and I guess I'm just really here because, well, I'm not old and I'm not a boy. I do try to be good, but I am going to say that, um, I like to think about things. I like to see where things come from. Where do they start? What's the progression? And when I look at this whole progression, it almost seems a little bit obvious to me that this is all stuff because I think, I see Jill's notes, an investigation into a council that she does not feel might be doing all the right stuff. Now, if that's the case, she's going to go ask legal advice, is this right? And then suddenly, miraculously, when there's an investigation coming up, questions being asked, looking into something that doesn't seem right, miraculously, all of Jill's personal notes appear and get spread out. Is that legal? I'm, I don't know if that's legal. That seems a little odd to me. I just like to follow the bread, breadcrumb, breadcrumb trail. And I just, something seems a little odd that you are suddenly under the gun when you're actually looking into something else that your track record says you work for the people. Your track record says you are a servant and you've taken care of a lot of people in Trinity County with the decisions that you've made. Your track record shows that you're a servant. And for you to go do all the administration and the hard work of looking into something that seems a little fishy and then you get nailed, that seems fishy to me too. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Brown.
Hey there, Jeremy Brown, Burnt Ranch. Um, I think the board has a pretty basic choice, uh, as the outcome of all these public comments, and that would be to find a outside party to make a determination and make it public what is, is not legal or illegal, um, in these events. It should be able to be worked out. Um, you can avoid a lot of drama by doing that. Um, it's sad for me to see the board, um, losing a lot of trust or whether it's just Supervisor Cox or the board as a whole. Um, it's hard to earn this trust back that's, that's verbally been expressed that it's been lost. Um, I think you have the capacity to do it. I think, um, having a new CAO with Shise, um, yes, dealing with something like this from the get-go county for you right there. Um, I would expect that the board will respond to whatever you want to call it, the allegations or, um, find a proper way of publicly reviewing the current county council and whatever that contract does or doesn't include. Um, the public wants to know exactly what's going on and who's making the decisions. The board has the opportunity as a whole to come back with a public response to address all of this and, um, if that doesn't, I'll personally be disappointed and lose trust in the, the local government. But also I think the public as a whole will lose further trust. Um, trust does not come easily and, um, I think all of, uh, the public's comments should be taken very seriously. Um, Supervisor Cox, I have a, a lot of respect for the way I've seen you deal with some of the county issues, uh, during my time as a supervisor. And, um, uh, it's hard to, to see so much accusations, um, put towards you. Um, but you know, it's the way, and I believe you have the capacity to, to do that. Um, and if not, the board as a whole has the capacity to do that. I, um, I hope you all can make the right decision. I hope I can read about it in the newspaper or hear about it at the next board meeting. Um, I hope that it can all be done in public and not in closed session. Uh, thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. At this time, we will take a ten minute break and we will resume at 11:30. I'm sorry, resume at 10:43.
I, you know what? I didn't, I didn't bring anything fun. I brought, I, no, no, I, I brought nut bread and some, I mean, some apple, yeah, these are my, my niece's, my stuff from this. I brought olives.
No, I used to like you a lot.
And some cheese, and some crackers. You could have one of my, you could have one of my olives though, if you want.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, it is 10:43. We are back in session, continuing public comment.
My name is Chris Parkin and I read the what FOIA notes were online. I read them last night for the first time and, and I read it a couple of times and, you know, when I read it the first time, I just kind of go through and for me, I have, I've got to scrutinize things. You know, I have a kind of a slow learner. I don't, you know, synthesize things well when I read them. But the first time through, it just kind of cruised through like a Tom Clancy book, you know, it's just, it was just easy to read and I could follow right along. And the further I got into this, it just seemed like I was reading somebody's problem solving notes. You know, like when you, when you have a, when you have a problem, if you have ever worked in an organization and you come up against a problem, you, you, you define the problem, analyze it, develop solutions, evaluate options, and select the best option, and then you implement the, the solution. And what I gathered is that evidently there was somebody underperforming in their position and what, what to do about that, you know? And so it seemed like Jill went out to, she wanted to, you know, when you develop potential solutions, you ask what to do about the problem. You ask questions, you confer with others on subject matter experts, you seek options, they list the options, and then you evaluate your options, you weigh the positives against the negatives, review and assess, and review and assess again, and then you confer with others to see if your assessment is correct. And then you select the best option and you confer with colleagues. Now, in this thing that I read last night, there was even Jill had, you know, it's, it's like the last page was, was more like, I mean, she wrote a letter to herself. It's like working notes, like, you know, from Jill to Jill, and it was working notes on, on, and it was quite lengthy. It was probably, I don't know, four or five pages, but it was all her personal thoughts on how she was going to deal with the situation and her problems. And, you know, who doesn't take notes? Who doesn't write things down? Who doesn't try and figure things out on how to do it? And, and Jim Underwood told her to confer with the rest of the board to make sure that what she was doing was, was correct. And just quickly here, I think being a supervisor is a difficult job, and I can't imagine most of the phone calls and emails that are received deal with problems and, and solutions are expected. I think being a supervisor of District Two is exceptionally hard because you're at the county seat and everybody associates your position with as having more clout or having more, more sway in the, in the county government. I'm out of time, so.
Thank you. Nancy Anderson?
Yes, hi Nancy Anderson in Lewiston. I just am, I don't know, baffled. I really wish that county government could continue forward, not backwards, and focus on some things that we all have that are common threats. And I, I don't blame the supervisors. I just feel like there's an ongoing battle. The lines have been drawn and it seems like every, we just keep going back to the same fight. I would like to see, moving forward, that all the supervisors and the citizens could make a commitment to focus on some common things that we all have a stake in. The mental health of our community, the drug fentanyl crisis, the illegal cannabis market that is involved in trafficking and other heinous things that to keep looking backwards. Quite honestly, I think TAA is getting blamed for everything, maybe even climate change now, who knows? That it's, it's old business. Let's move forward. Let's stop targeting supervisors and start supporting them and encouraging them to move forward. I would just like to say that I, I don't think there's anything nefarious here, but I agree with some others, that perhaps the best thing to do would be to get somebody independent from outside the county, to shine a light on it all, and let the truth come out, which I have a feeling is not going to be anything surprising. So, just my opinion. Thank you very much for all you guys do. Bye bye.
Thank you. I have no raised hands, no jobs. I saw Dailene. Jeff?
Hi, Jessica Delazinia. I'm commenting today to call on the board to investigate what these emails have exposed. There's a natural distrust of government in the community. That's normal. I think it's at an all-time high right now because of these emails. What I'm surprised is there is a crisis of morale in the county government with the staff because of these emails. It's not controversial that county council performance needs to be reviewed. Nobody's arguing that. What, what the controversial aspect is, is that the chair was trying to circumvent the rest of the board in installing another TAA lawyer as county council and also buddy with Jim Underwood, obviously. That's the controversial issue right now, and that's why you have department heads speaking out, and that's why you have supervisors showing up and speaking out. The, the fact that an attorney who's the county's adversary in litigation is writing staff reports to be reworded by the chair of the board needs to be looked into. There's legality things that need to be addressed by somebody who does those things, like the DA, and there's ethics issues in this, and it needs to be looked at. You know, several members of the board were asked straight up when running for, when running for their office, whether they were pawns of Jim Underwood, and everybody denied it. They were also asked whether they were members of TAA, and everybody denied it. Well, these emails have exposed that there's at least one puppet of Jim Underwood on the board, and I guess we're going to find out if there's any others based on how the board addresses this controversy. They can do nothing, or they can do what's in their power to do while it's being investigated, and that stripped Jill of her chair and committee appointments. So, it's on the board now. This is why you guys ran, to, to make an improvement in the county. And, and this is your, this is your chance to regain some trust of the community, and more importantly, county staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi, this is Steve Lyon, Junction City. You know, this is a really distressing situation. This involves my business, my community, my livelihood. As a previous caller said, Ms. Anderson, I, I would love to move forward and put all this behind us, but we can't. It keeps coming back. There, there's, there's an effort to go after the ordinance and change the rules, and there's an effort to go after the general plan and get rid of rural residential, and there's, you know, the setback issues, can't get variances, and it's just, leave us alone. Let us just run our businesses. Quit changing the rules out from under us all the dang time. I can't make decisions for my business because I don't know what the rules are going to be next year. Can I build this building here? I don't know if I can build a building where I want to build it. And, you know, again and again, I feel like we keep coming to the table, trying to negotiate, trying to find reasonable solutions, but we are negotiating with people who are acting in bad faith. It is perfectly legal to request records from public officials in California. My understanding is that those emails were received under a public records request. That is, there is nothing shady about that, that is perfectly legal. Your county employees, government employees, and we have the right to see your, what's going on behind the scenes. Sunshine laws are, are for this reason, and it is improper for the chairman of the board to be constantly consulting with an active litigant against the county. Underwood and TAA are active litigants. Right now, that case is still ongoing. They still have some sort of oversight of the planning commission and have received over a half million dollars in settlements, and to be blind copy, BCC means blind copy. That means she was emailing Margaret Long and secretly copying in Jim Underwood on these emails. If that does not seem improper to you, I suggest you check your ethics, because this is improper, and this county does need an investigation. We need to look into this. And the trust that has been lost again and again, and yet you keep asking us to, to follow the rules and come to the table and negotiating good faith when you're not, and it's not fair, and it hasn't been fair from the beginning. And I hope we get to the bottom of this, and I encourage a full and thorough investigation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Natalie?
Hi, Natalie McNamara from Hayfork. We live in the poorest county in one of the richest places on earth. The cities take our water, the state ignores when our forests and towns burn, and still our county industries are punished by the opinions of individuals. Restaurants close, our friends and family move away in search of an income. For the sake of our children, that they may thrive in this beautiful land that we are lucky enough to call home, I pray we find a way to work together towards a prosperous, prosperous future for our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Dailene, do you have a comment? All right, with that, we will, well, you can come to the podium and make a couple of comments. Certainly, yep.
Sam Brinkley, been here for quite some time, pretty much since the program was initiated. And I've just watched corruption after corruption after corruption. It seems that finally, maybe sometimes, we're finally getting somewhere where the public can see. I mean, Jill, there was an email from you to Rick right here with a bullet point program, how to shut down cannabis in every single, single little community. Rick, when you ran for supervisor as my Lewiston area, you promised me you'd come to my farm. Looked me in the eye, said, Sam, I'll come to your farm. You've been, you've been invited twice since then. You haven't come and you're not coming. You know, Jill, you appoint your, your commissioner, who does nothing but bully our cannabis program people, shutting them down, talking to them like they're complete idiots. I mean, it's infuriating. You know, you've got 120 plus people waiting for variances, and during the last commissioner's meeting, someone said, hey, why don't we just group the ones that are not even contested? Let's just group the ones that aren't contested so we can get them to move forward, so they can make a living, feed their children, because they've invested, well, they've invested as much as me, they've invested millions in this community. And, you know, you're, you're useful whoever decides, oh, we, we don't want to do that. We don't want to group anything. You know, it's just, you love the money. You love this, the grants, you know, a, a, and, and, you know, it's funny, it's a small world. Your son's on the rescue, fire and rescue team. Well, they're, they're 14-foot double axle trailer that they just got. That's from me this year, from me. I support this community, and I've watched you do everything that you can to shut this cannabis program, making comments like, we have to protect the historic district. When it comes to store, protect them from what? What exactly are you protecting them from? You know? What historically is, do you need to protect the historic district from? I mean, what are you protecting from? The bars? But what, it's just, this corruption has been, I'm so happy it finally came out. I mean, you've got people coming up here, I saw from the house before I got here, Sharp Stand Up and Kiss the Ring of Dick Morris, of course. Got to do that. Hey, when I was a cannabis grower, he'd come up and say, hey, you want a 400 amp service? I'll get you six. I'll get you six, but it'll cost you $10,000. That's how he made his money. He's your useful idiot, and he's robbed every marijuana grower that I know of. And it's just about time somebody has exposed you for who you are, and I hope that we investigate further, and if it's found what we all know it is, you should be gone, or worse. It's just infuriating and ridiculous the way you have slow strangled every business here, and now you want to bring on a TAA lawyer? That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Dailene, Dailene? I think she's trying. Maybe take John and see if she gets her mic to work. John Brower?
The, the other elected county officials that have been brave enough to stand up and speak to this matter, you know, the, the citizens of Trinity rely on our elected officials to live by a higher standard, and I want to applaud them for, for bringing attention to this and, and requesting the, the right action. I think that action is clear. I also would like to request at this time, a future agenda item at the next possible meeting, to, to remove Chair Cox from her chair seat and committee assignments pending the outcome of a thorough investigation. The, the obvious conflicts of interest of communicating with a litigating attorney against the county, closed session matters, it really needs a deeper look. There's been, you know, many accusations of, of problems with ethics, Trinity County going back a long, long time. There's been, in my short time here, you know, I've seen whisper campaigns about other supervisors, but this seems to have an actual paper trail. And the, the matters that, of county councils review, or well, that's all county code or county contract, and that's simple enough to work its way through. But this is, this goes deeper, and I think requires a thorough investigation and, and removing Chair Cox from her, her enhanced position of power as chair and controlling the agenda and her committee assignments pending the outcome of that investigation, at least temporarily. Maybe the investigation shows that there's nothing to be concerned about, and her position can be restored. She's done some good things for the county, but this needs to be taken seriously by the rest of you supervisors. And you're, you're now fighting an uphill battle to try to re-earn this squandered trust of your community. Please take this seriously. Please take action. It's within your purview, and it's expected from your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dailene? Dailene? I have no other raised hands, no jobs. All right, with that, we will close public comment. And move on to reports and announcements. We have reports from department heads. Any department heads in the room wishing to report out? None? Are there any on Zoom? I have no raised hands. All right, a report from our county administrative officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to express my appreciation and thanks to the members of the county staff and members of the community who have welcomed me in this last week and a half, and I look forward to working some of these complex issues in Trinity County over the next months, days, and years. Thank you.
Thank you. Reports from members of the Board of Supervisors. We will start with Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Hello. Thank you, Jill. This week, I, I had a light week. I worked with a collaborative group determining how to kind of reinvigorate the Board of Supervisors' time that is spent with the Trinity County Collaborative, and I also spoke in correspondence with some folks regarding the Garrett Road project, and I think that's, that's about it for this week. Oh, finished the letter for the insurance commissioner, and we'll speak about that when that is asked to be spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Goken?
Last Thursday, there was a town hall meeting in Lewiston, had to do with the, sorry, had to do with the restoration flows. I was attended by approximately 100 people, myself, Rick, and our CAO, Trent Todd Hill were there. It was a really good meeting. We got to talk about the lake levels and why they're so low, the possible waste of water, and just so that people know at this time, we are the only lake in California that is on the decline right now. Every other lake is 90-plus percent full. We were at 40% a week or so ago, and now we're at 37%, so we are losing water. We will be lucky to get to 50% at the end of this year, which seems to be a gross mismanagement of our water. It also came to light, one of the meetings, that Bureau of Reclamation knows it takes, compared to Shasta, which could take a few months to fill, it takes two points, something years for Trinity Lakes to fill, even in good years. We have a very small drainage, which even kind of amplifies the mismanagement in my mind, thinking that drawing the lake down to 19% last year, there would be any filling of this lake past 40 or 50% this year. So that's something that we, at this time, have the option to, the subject has been broached about having banking of water. So every year, we don't, this is a wet year, 700, 1,000 acre feet will be used to go down the river for restoration purposes. Finally, after all these years, that the, the question has been broached, and, and we're going to come up with a solution on how to bank some of this water, but there's a lot of mechanisms that will need to be in place, and it's, it's going to take a while for us to do, but we are now in that next step of finally being able to figure out how to not use all our water every year and to keep Trinity Lake at a much higher lake for tourism, fish, PUD, power, and all the things that Trinity County uses the lake and the river for. So, some good things, some bad things. Last night, we had a Um, so some good things, some bad things. Uh, last night we had a um, virtual Zoom, myself, uh, Supervisor Lou Wiler and CEO Trent Tuttle were, were here. Uh, we had a virtual Zoom meeting with our Congressman Jared Huffman about the same things I just discussed. Uh, he had, we had about a hundred and something people on the chat. And they had some, some very good questions, um, that we need, we need to answer a little bit more in depth. I, I did feel that the, the meeting was a little bit short and we didn't get to, to dig into, to everything that we needed to. Uh, I would say to the people from the county that have been participating in the two town halls that we've had so far, to keep participating, we will be having more. Their input is very important. Uh, the loss of economy to this, this county is in the millions because of the flows and lack of lake level. Um, and you know, at this time, I, I kind of think with, uh, with Heidi and Trent and myself having pretty good lake and water knowledge. Um, and Rick's, uh, skill with both getting the word out in his, uh, financial background. I think we're kind of at this golden moment now that we might get to have some change and get, uh, this lake and this restoration thing kind of figured out a lot better than we have it now. So we're going to work on it hard. We got some months ahead of us and, you know, probably some years ahead of us, but, uh, we're, we're making, we're making headway. We're getting past, uh, talking to just the local guys, TRP. We're getting up the ladder to Don Bader, who's in charge of Bureau of Reclamation. Um, so we're making headway. Things seem to be good, but, um, we have to keep at it. The people and ourselves have to keep at it. I did have a question that was asked to me at LAVCO last week about Craig Hare. Someone thought Craig Hare had left the Hayfork Water District. He stepped away for a, he's taken the consulting business on there. He stepped away from the day to day. His son-in-law is now running the day-to-day for Ewing Reservoir and the, uh, Water District there in, in Hayfork. I've met with both of them. Um, I think things are in good hands. Uh, Craig was there, I think for 41 years. His, his son-in-law has been there for several years. Um, knowing Craig, I think he's, uh, always done a pretty good job there, a very good job. So I don't see any lack of, uh, any downturn for the Water District of, uh, of Hayfork. I think it'll continue to be good. And Craig moving into the position that he is, writing grants, trying to get, uh, the uh, level or get a couple of extra feet on the top of that lake will maybe for the first time in a long time, allow people to recreate teraf there to, to canoe in Ewing Reservoir, which we haven't been able to do forever. So, um, it, it wasn't a bad thing. It was actually a good thing. Things are in good hands. Craig's still on top of things. Everything should move along, should be pretty seamless. So there is no reason to be alarmed in Hayfork over the Community Water District. So, um, if anybody has any questions about that or where Craig went to, where son-in-law is at now, and how that progression is moving forward, uh, feel free to ask anytime. Uh, Craig, as you know, is an open guy. So am I. I'll take any questions about that anytime you guys like. But I think it's going to be just fine for, for Hayfork Water District. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Lou Wiler.
For out of county travel, I was in Anderson for the Nortech Board Meeting. And, uh, that was my first meeting with that group. It was, uh, interesting in that I learned that we had not had, uh, representation there for some time. And, uh, there's a lot of important things going on there. And I was recruited in to be part of another ad hoc committee meeting for Nortech to work on some of their forward-looking organizational and strategy plans. So I'll be working with them on that. Um, California State Association of Counties, CSAC, uh, I had mentioned this previously, but just want to acknowledge again that, uh, future board agenda items include, uh, our decision on how we will endorse or not the at-home initiative, as well as how we will or will not fund the National Center for Public Lands Counties. I mentioned previously that I had reached out to the Acting State Fire Marshal about reopening public comment, uh, about the fire hazard maps that were established. And I had not heard back from him. So I reached out again and I copied in the CEO of CSAC to hopefully get things going. So I, I will hopefully, I'll just keep pursuing until I get an answer. Um, the Northern Rural Training and Employment Association, uh, I, I mentioned, that's Nortech basically, uh, the ad hoc committee, Sierra Nevada Conservancy. I met with members of the leadership team for an onboarding. And, uh, ours is a non-voting role, but they will be having a pre-board meeting in which some of those who are assigned but don't have a voting position can provide input to the voting member. So that pre-board meeting will be coming up soon and that will be our opportunity to weigh in on the things that matter from our perspective in that upcoming board meeting. Uh, North Coast Resource Partnership. I had a strong onboarding from that team. It was very impressive that they had a very strong onboarding program pulled together. Uh, they are also, uh, working on a new strategic plan and, uh, asked if I would assist with that as we get involved in that process. Uh, as Supervisor Gogan mentioned, uh, a lot of things going on with the Trinity Lake and River Releases. The Town Hall Meeting in Lewiston uh, was a strong turnout. People stayed, we tried to wrap it up officially at about two hours, but, uh, a lot of people stayed afterwards for a further conversation. I posted, uh, notes, uh, that I took from facilitating that meeting online. And I also posted the results of the survey that has been out about that same subject online. Uh, at the time I posted, I think we had a, well, at, at the meeting, we had 179 responses. On Sunday, when I posted notes, we were at 193 and we're now well over 200. Uh, so I'll update as I, as I have time to just make people aware of what's others are saying. And, and the survey is fairly broad and, but it's all focused on the water, but it's broad in terms of what we're asking people to give feedback about. And, um, and that information was shared with Congressman Huffman, uh, in advance of that meeting last night, so that he would have that input on behalf of, uh, county. Uh, and that survey remains open if people would like to participate.
End of report. All right. Supervisor Fisher.
Okay, uh, on the 19th, I had a Behavioral Health Advisory Board Meeting, which I attended via Zoom. Um, nothing earth-shattering there. Um, then also on the 27th, the Social Services Transportation Advisory Committee met for the first time in person. Um, so that, that was a good, an improvement. Um, we met at the Reading Ranch area Health Center in here in Weaverville. And the results of that will become the board, um, in the next couple of meetings for the, uh, unmet transit needs and definitions. So, uh, other than that, I don't have anything to report.
All right. Um, I passed the broadband oversight over to CEO Tuttle. We had an update meeting with Connie Stewart and Planning Department and, um, interim Deputy Director Presley finished off the grant, uh, paperwork that Skylar had worked on and we were in receipt of that grant, but it needed just that final paperwork filed so that the funding can flow and that got, uh, completed. So that is now on the desk of the CIO with any support that you need. Had a quarterly meeting with four Supervisor Berkey. Um, the, uh, Good Neighbor Authority did get submitted timely to contracts and agreement, grants and agreements. And, um, so Supervisor Berkey tells me those processes are moving faster than they have in the past. And so we expect that that's going to be beneficial to us. The RAC, that's the Resource Advisory Commission, which decides, they receive the proposals and decide which projects will be selected for Title II funding. That has one vacancy and there will be two people leaving. So if anybody has interest in serving on that committee, there are applications available and all of those seats will need to be replaced in 2024 because that's a four-year cycle. So if that's something that you're interested in, that's coming up. Also, the Minersville Boat Ramp is now in contracting for the engineering. So that is moving forward as well. Um, that is the end of that report. And for moving into the ad hoc reports, the Good Neighbor Authority, since that document is now under grants and agreements, that, um, ad hoc ends today. Um, the strategic plan, Supervisor Lou Wiler, um, give an update on that handoff?
Yes, uh, I joined, uh, CIO Trent Tuttle and several department heads last week to continue working on the plan. It was both a working session as well as a handoff session. And so this pro, this, uh, strategic plan is now officially in the hands of our new CIO. And, uh, I will say I was impressed with the work that was done by the members of the team. We, they made a lot of progress and I think there's a strong foundation uh, for us to work from. Uh, but that's all now in the hands of, uh, Trent Tuttle. And I, uh, will also am wrapping up officially now the strategic plan ad hoc committee.
Correct. So that one ends today. Uh, Trinity County Water Supervisor Carpenter Harris or Gogan?
Um, my, my only comment is that, um, you know, we're just trying to actively, as Rick's survey has been amazing and then just fielding the many, many questions and reading, um, background information, trying to make sure that I'm, my mind is where the situation is and feeling, feeling questions from people from very far away who like to come here and recreate. It's been astounding to me, um, how many people are interested in our area and, and the distance from which they travel to come enjoy, enjoy our, our landscapes. So just working to just try to make sure that I'm hearing everyone.
Nice. Thank you. All right. Cannabis Ordinance Supervisors Lou Wiler and Fisher.
Okay. Uh, so our work continues with our, our two-hour meetings, although, uh, this week, uh, on Friday, when we meet instead of meeting from one to three, we're starting at 10, uh, to allow ourselves much more time in hopes that we can push through the, the content that's been put before us as a potential set of updated ordinances. Uh, so hopefully we will be able to wrap that up. Um, I'll be doing that remotely because I'll be out of town, but we'll, we'll still be meeting. And, uh, we are still planning on two public workshops. Uh, the timing of that is really dependent upon when we get this ready because we want to give enough notice for people to see uh, what is being proposed for updates, uh, so that when the town hall meetings, public workshops happen, uh, you've had a chance to vet that information and, and form your opinions. Uh, the email address is still out there, cannabis.ordinance@trinitycounty.org. And that is a, if you send something in that's input about the ordinances and changes you would like to see in the update process, that immediately goes to all people that are on the ad hoc committee. So everybody sees it at once and it's stored in a centralized place. Um, and then, uh, just a note that the, uh, Planning Commission, uh, voted, uh, against a proposed change to, I'll call it variance-related language in the cultivation ordinance. And at this point, that we're not planning for that matter to be brought before the board, uh, in advance of just addressing everything in the ordinance update. So, uh, rather than continue to try to bring one-off things, we just want to pull it all in and do the ordinance updates and whatever changes come out of that would, would come as one instead of, um, bringing things separately. That's all I had.
Right. That, I think fairly well covers it. We did not set any dates certain for our, our, um, working sessions. The one thing I did want to address, something from public comment, we, we received, um, a letter that said that, um, the, there were private ad hoc meetings with members of the cannabis community and this ad hoc is not invite involving any members of the cannabis community or the anti-cannabis community. This is strictly staff and Supervisor Lou Wiler and I, there, we have no public involvement at this point. That'll come later and it'll be open to everyone when it does. So I just wanted to make that perfectly clear that we're not engaging with the public at this point in our ad hocks. We're just doing the administrative work that needs to be done.
Okay, um, Economic Development Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Yes, uh, Chair Cox and I met with representatives of the TOT-funded partners, if you will. These are the various chambers and Arts Council and so forth. And, uh, these organizations are basically, uh, working together to figure out how they could perhaps do some things in a more unified approach that would give a bigger bang for the buck, if you will, of impact that each of their organizations try to make on behalf of the county. And I feel like, uh, we made some good progress. We also used a survey there to help kind of gather that input that might have disparate views. And then we shared that back to facilitate discussion. And, uh, we made good progress and to the point where the group asked, uh, for another facilitated session in May, uh, where we will, uh, hopefully be coming up with a, a very clear path forward for, uh, working together across those organizations.
Right. And Supervisor Carpenter Harris, anything on the California Home Insurance?
Yes, um, I drafted a letter and, uh, Supervisor Lou Wiler went over it with me and we have that prepared and ready to be, um, hopefully approved within the consent calendar for today's meeting. Would you like me to share the information in that? I, I won't belabor you with the, well, maybe you want me to read the whole letter. Maybe you do. I don't know. I will. I think I will. For the record, um, so we have, we created, uh, we put together some information that we were able to gather from different, um, folks who, who work with homeowners insurance, including, um, agencies. So I spoke with several different organizations that offer insure, insurance for, um, homeowners and businesses, reached out to different people in, um, real estate and then spoke with several of our, uh, volunteer fire departments regarding their insurance issues. And this is the letter that was written, um, in regards to that. As citizens and leaders in Trinity County, we are seeking your assistance with an urgent and critically important matter. This letter is written to Commissioner Laura, uh, the California, um, Insurance Commissioner. Our residents and business owners are struggling to find insurance providers to cover their homes and businesses. When they do find a provider, they're, they often find that the costs associated with available policies in Trinity County have risen to levels that are simply financially out of reach. This combination of trends is putting a significant strain on our citizens. This year, the cost of insurance has risen to a crippling level with the cost of structured insurance rising by up to 20 to 30% in just the last five years. In some cases, monthly insurance payments are equal to or more than mortgage payments. For those who have paid off their homes, there is no sight of relief or extra cash added to their liquid assets as their insurance payments now take the place of their mortgage payment in size. This is forcing many to self-insure, which is now putting them at severe risk. Trinity County residents are being dropped by the, by the insurance companies they have paid into for decades as many companies pull their coverage from our county or state, leaving people only one option, the California Fair Plan. The cost of the California Fair Plan coverage is extremely high. The coverage is often low and the tedious mandates put on the people to qualify for coverage at times are simply impossible to meet. Many senior homeowners are not able to afford or do the work the insurance companies are asking them to do. The significant costs associated with the requirements to replace roofs, tear off decks, rebuild decks with fire resistant materials, paint their homes, clear back landscaping and vegetation from their homes and cut down trees are simply out of financial reach for many of, for many in our community. The challenge goes beyond our homeowners. Some of our volunteer fire departments are now at risk of shutting their doors as structural coverage for their buildings exceeds their limited budgets. Our rural communities in some cases are 100% dependent on the emergency services provided by volunteer fire departments. We have miles and miles of roads and rough terrain, no cell service, no landline service. And without our local volunteers, people facing emergencies will be left alone. The very idea that our local volunteer fire departments are not able to obtain insurance due to cost is absurd. Over the last 10 years of wildfires in Trinity County, not a single one was started by a house fire. The private residence owners are not to blame for this catastrophic wildfires that we contend with year, contend with every year. Yet they are the ones paying the price. Of the millions of acres burned in Trinity County, the loss of private dwellings is remarkably small. In the last five years, communities in our county have engaged with our local natural resource agencies and fire safe councils to put millions of dollars towards fire resilience. Our communities and partners have worked hard to make entire communities fire safe and fire resilient. Private landowners and businesses have cleared brush, cleared roadways, improved turnaround space in their driveways, increased awareness, supported prescribed burning and learned from each catastrophic wildfire event how to keep their homes safe. Yet for all of our efforts, insurance companies use very little, use very basic maps to determine if our homes are in fire, in high fire danger, seemingly giving no consideration for if our homes are in fire, in high fire danger, seemingly giving no consideration for site specific improvements. These blanket increases are unfair and inequitable. Our rural communities struggle with providing housing for all socioeconomic groups. Houses for sale are few and far between, especially for those in lower economic brackets. The cost of insurance is now making homeownership a nearly impossible dream. Our county real estate brokers and title companies report housed, houses falling out of escrow at alarming rates due to full denial of insurance coverage or rates too high for the hopeful, hopeful homeowners to afford. As citizen and leaders of this, of the poorest county, of the poorest counties in California, one of the poorest counties in California, we are asking you to look into the rates of the California Fair Plan is charging and their capacity to handle the insurance load being put on the organization. Be aware that insurance companies are dropping coverage as they exit our state, leaving behind customers who have paid their premiums for decades, being left with the single option of the California Fair Plan. Request insurance companies to provide discounts for why, fire wise communities and landowners who have done due diligence in creating a fire resilient property. Cap cost on volunteer fire departments to ensure that our rural departments can afford to insure their fire halls and provide financial support to help offset the escalating cost of insurance to business and homeowners in Trinity County. Thank you in advance for your efforts on our behalf. That is the letter that is included in our consent calendar today.
Nice. So supervisor Harris, Carpenter Harrison, supervisor Lutweller, thank you for your research and um all that it took to create such a thorough, thoughtful, fact-filled letter. Um, and so that ad hoc also ends today. All right. Moving into the consal- consent calendar. These items include routine, non- controversial matters and will be acted upon the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the current calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Um, are there any comments on the consent calendar? Any on Zoom? I have Nicole Moody. Hey Nicole.
Hello. Um, Nicole Moody from Riverdale, and I'd like to make a comment on the grant section three point ten and three point eleven. And so I thank you the board for hearing my comment. I have major concerns about the funding to ensure the oversight of Susie Cockums' housing units, where she puts all types of people. How much funding does the housing department have to ensure ongoing assistance to the clients placed in the rapid rehab units? Right now, Susie's opening up a new house on Oregon Street and has two others in the community. What will happen if they run out of funding? What's going to happen to the people who are in these houses and who rely on these places? Are they going to end up on the streets? Are these houses with no funding going to turn into flop houses in the neighborhoods? I'm asking the board to please ensure funding is being used correctly and that enough funds are available to oversee these houses. It was also stated that by Susie Cockums on a local C O C meeting, that the housing department had no funds to assist people. How is she hiring two new staff members and getting a new office when they don't have money to help the people? Plus, do these new staff members even have housing experience? Do they have the experience to go out into our community and talk to the ones in need in our county? Why would you allow these houses to open if there won't be educated people to oversee them? This puts our safety at risk and knowing Susie's history, she will walk away and leave the homes to fall apart like in Buick County. Please do not let this happen here in Trinity County. Susie runs a consulting business and it should be a conflict of interest since she's taking a full salary from the housing department, but doing the same business with other counties. Did the county even advertise for the division director's position? Susie does not have the experience to run these housing programs and I'm asking you as the board to please step in before it falls all on the county to pick up her pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other raised hands, no chops. All right. Um, bringing it back to the board. Um, I believe we need to pull item three point ten because that requires a resolution. It does not. We're good. Right. Do you want to speak to those items, Susie? Thank you.
Susie Cockums, Division Director, Grants and Housing. And with respect to the resolution, I think that matter is uh a gray matter at this point. Um, in following suit with previous donations that have hit the board agenda, those items have come forward without a resolution. And so today I ask that you move that forward
Okay.
without the resolution um and until more research can be done. If uh indeed a resolution is needed, we can come back at a later date.
Okay. Um, okay. I just received an email from Susie stating that a minute order would be sufficient for this item. In place of a resolution?
Susie Hawkins.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, any board members wishing to pull any items? Okay. Right. With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I will second.
Right. Motion by supervisor Lutweller, second by department. A member of the board or stressed that an item be heard out of order. Is there a need to change the order of any of the items? Right. During then, item four point one, adopt a resolution authorizing the elections office to not list supporters and opponents of measures on the county ballots for all future elections. If this resolution is not adopted, there is an anticipated increase in printing and mailing cost to all Trinity County registered voters due to the increased length and size of the ballots resulting from the additional text. And we have our clerk recorder assessor, Shanna White, here to speak on this.
Good morning, Shanna White, County Clerk Recorder Assessor, registrar of voters. So in twenty twenty-two, um, state legislation passed a bill saying that um supporters and opponents of a, of measures would be printed on ballots themselves, um, taken from the intent that was sent originally to the offices. If, if we go and print these on the ballots, it could make our ballots bigger. Um, I'm sure, not sure if you guys all remember our two card ballot, which was a little confusing to people. We got single ballots back. Um, so we had to deal with that. Um, it'll cost more in printing costs, it'll cost more in mailing costs, it'll cost more in um receiving it back from us. So I would ask that you um please approve this man, this resolution.
Okay. All right. Questions of board members? All right. Is there any public comment on this item? I have no raised hands and no chops. All right. Bring it back. I got a raised hand. Okay. Rhoda?
This is Rhoda Kane from Trinity Center and um I just want to make, as long as we still get the booklet every year, I don't think it needs to be all on the ballot. I would support Shanna White in this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Have no other raised hands, no chops. All right. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Right. Motion by supervisor Lutweller, second by supervisor Goken. Supervisor Goken?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Item four point two, take the following actions regarding the engineer one and engineer two classifications. Number one, approve a side letter agreement with the skilled trades unit modifying attachment A of the M O U regarding the engineer one and engineer two classifications. And number two, authorize the director of human resources to modify the alphabetical listing of classifications by changing the ranges of engineer one to T two six one and engineer two to T two seven one, retroactively effective May one, twenty twenty-three. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for an engineer one at A step was nine thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and is now eleven thousand four hundred one dollars. And for engineer two was ten thousand two hundred fifteen dollars and is now twelve thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars. Uh, CAO Tuttle.
Liz is going to be presenting on this.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. And these next uh two items are the, the last that we have negotiated um for side letter agreements in a series that have already come before you and to just evaluate pay and rate of pay outside of our current negotiated M O U. And these are special um positions within the county that have not been successfully filled and we believe that increasing the salary may attract candidates. Um, I will notice that we um, we did, we are required um for notice and discussion with the union. Uh, when this was brought to the skilled trade unit, it was um not supported in this particular item. However, we have done our due diligence and it is at the pleasure of the board to approve this.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, questions of board members?
Can you just repeat that last part and clarify?
Um, Margaret can jump in as needed. Um, so we bring these items to the bargaining units and they can call for a vote of their members. And in this particular item, it was not approved. Um, however, our requirement is to notice and discuss, which we have done. And then the board can make a decision um on, on this item separate from that.
And, and is there just anything you would share? I, I'm assuming that most of the time they are agreeing and approving. So in this case, do you know, is there something relevant to share about what you sensed was the reason for lack of support?
Uh, I do not have that.
Okay.
All right. Any questions? All right. We will open public comment on this item. I have no chops and no raised hands. All right. Get back to the board. Someone care to make a motion?
I move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Right. Motion by supervisor Lutweller, second by supervisor Carpenter Harris. Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Goken?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Item four point three, take the following actions regarding the senior engineer classification. Number one, approve a side letter agreement with the management and confidential unit M and C, modifying attachment A of the M O U regarding the senior engineer classification. And number two, authorize the director of human resources to modify the alphabetical listing of classifications by changing the range for senior engineer to M two seven nine, effective May one, twenty twenty-three. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a single engineer at A step was eleven thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and is now thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. Dr. Hamilton?
Uh, thank you, Chair. This is the um progression in the series uh for senior engineer. However, it does fall into a separate bargaining unit for management. So we also were able to review and discuss, and this was approved by union members.
Questions of board members? All right. We will open public comment. Any public comment on this item? I have no raised hands, no chops. All right. Close public comment, bring it back to the board.
Move to approve as presented.
I will second.
Motion by supervisor Lutweller, second by supervisor Goken.
And just, uh, just a comment just to make because I, I think, I, I don't want it to come across, at least for me, as, as a cavalier, uh, the bargaining unit didn't support it and yet we just move ahead. But, and, and I was obviously interested to hear what they might have said it's their reason. But I, I just, my view on both of these is that we, in general, uh, have struggled to pay enough to get and keep people, that we have a dire need to fill some of these positions. And while I respect that the bargaining units are probably trying to balance a lot of things about equity and all kinds of things like that, I'm trusting in what I know is a, a very dedicated approach to that same thing from, from Liz and, and I know you coming in Trent two as well. So my, my vote is, is a vote in confidence of what you're doing to balance that as you, we work with the bargaining units and a priority of getting these roles filled.
Supervisor Goken?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutweller?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. That concludes our open session. We will now move into closed session. Item five point one, Government Code Section five four nine five four point five C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Initiation of Litigation, Number of Cases Two. And item five point two, Government Code Section five four nine five four point five E, Public Employee Evaluation, County Council. Is there any public comment on the closed session?
I just didn't get a chance to finish, so I'm just here to finish.
So your comments will have to be related strictly to closed session items, however?
They sure are, madam Chair. Um, it's great that y'all think that, um, you know, Jill can have this relationship with Jim Underwood, but she's implementing his direct objectives here. It's not just them having a friendly chat and asking for advice. Um, you know, it's asking what's right and wrong. She's playing out this agenda of a certain fuel and um they think they can control Trinity County. Heck, you almost did. You're going for the death blow here. I want to take a moment and uh say thank you to those who do have our back because I see you. I see you guys and I appreciate you guys. And we're counting on you. We're counting on you for some leadership here. A lot was said today. This was really intense meeting. I, you know, I know you guys have a hard job to do. This is a lot energetically to take on. Thank you for taking all this on. It's a quite, quite a job to be done. Look, we're not saying we don't want council, county council to be reviewed. It sounds like the time for review is applicable. Uh, we just absolutely don't want her to be replaced unfairly, unjustly with a certain individual who has much, much vested interest in a particular small group of people in this county. I don't want to name's names here. If we don't do something, the same thing will keep happening. It'll keep happening over and over and over. Cannabis growers have been made political martyrs of this whole time. How come there's double standards now? Just like as we're barely gaining a bit of momentum. And I quote from Jill's email, "Success of this venture is extremely important to all concerned, and it is my wish to serve you and the people of Trinity County well in this endeavor." I don't know who she's talking to here, but certainly no cannabis grower I know. We're small family farms and look, I understand you don't want us here. Trust me, we're all feeling it, how much you don't want us here. But personalizing, completely personalizing your agenda or the powers that be and playing it out unfairly without due process is not okay. You know, trying to defund the arts council because of your particular disdain for cannabis is absolutely unethical. Uh, we want to be here. Look, we want to be here. We deserve to be here. In fact, we're the backbone of this community and we have been for generations. So I urge you to take a look to the top and the trickle down effect. This is in both directions. I'm just hoping someone here can take some leadership so the board can move forward. I understand mistakes happen. Let's deal with them. Let's get new leadership in here so we can overcome this and have the bright future we all deserve. Thank you so much.
Shanna White, Trinity County resident, county clerk recorder assessor uh for Trinity County. I question uh the last week when county council's evaluation was being in closed session, Jill recused herself. She didn't get a reason, which I believe you're supposed to give. Um, so I question why she's not recusing herself again today. Thank you.
Lori Peterson, District One. I think with everything that's happened recently and the emails and exposure of some of the underhanded things that have gone on under Jill's leadership, it might be a good time to take five point two off the agenda for today until the rest of the board can work together to come to a decision on what to do about this issue. And also I'm a bit concerned that with all these wrongdoings, Margaret's firm might be the next litigant towards Trinity County. I wouldn't be surprised.
Jay Gross from Chris Hayfork. Um, I think the fact that uh we still have law enforcement here speaks volumes to the, the, the situation at hand. I thought most of the people in the crowd paid for Barcelona, but we'll take the big boss. Um, I uh you know, it's interesting. Um, I've been involved with a lot of uh community projects, especially in Hayfork. Um, and And in fact, I would say the entirety of all of my interactions, thank God, with Sheriff Saxon have been at fundraisers. Some of them have been a little wild, but they've still been fundraisers for great, great causes. And, and I think that it's important to remember that above all else, it, it's about the community here. And if, if somebody like myself can put all that aside and all the things that have happened to me in this community with the sheriff's department to work with the sheriff, to do good for the community, I would hope that people would be able to put their personal feelings aside. I would assume that everybody on this board has, has read some of these emails. And I know that I've read some of them that are about me. And I would, I, I would hope that everybody will, will, will be able to see that. I, I see a lot of fear in it. And I, and I, and, and I see a lot of, when I read those emails, a lot of people scared about different people in the community. And I think that it's, it, it's important that we, we, we think about how scary it is if this goes on. And that it's important for for us to stick to the rules, whatever they are, because I can tell you that I feel like if other people in this room operated on the same moral grounds and same rules that I saw going on in those emails, it, it, it would be a different game. I can tell you as somebody who was in litigation with the county for a couple of years, I would have greatly benefited from taking the, the leniencies and liberties that I saw taken in those emails. Regrettably, my parents instilled some sort of moral compass and integrity in me, for whatever that's worth. And, and I hope that that's something that we look at as a community and as a board that, that we, we, we gotta, we gotta keep pointing north. We gotta keep our eye on a moral compass. Whether something's illegal or something shady or something's whatever, there's something wrong here. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Adrian Keyes, Hayfork, Chair of Supervisors. Considering what may have caused the recusal from the last meeting, I don't know if that issue has been remedied, but I would say that the appearance of conflict remains. And I would suggest that Supervisor Cox recuse herself in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Blanco, Douglas City. Regarding item 5.2, I, I think it's appropriate. I think it's a good idea to have a review of county council's performance. I think it's good for the board. I think it's good for county council. My experience of the last few years with county council has really been limited to not so much Margaret Long, but Amanda Erhämmer. I have had my moments of frustration. Understanding, of course, that that is her job. We're in litigation. So, you know, evaluation's appropriate, although I think in this environment, today's not the day for a meaningful evaluation. And I would like to recommend that you maybe reschedule or otherwise not try to have a meaningful evaluation under, I don't know, the shadow, if you want to call it that. Today's not the day for it, but I do think it's a good idea. And to the extent it could be, I, I understand it's, it's a necessity to be closed session. But as much as we can involve the public in these reviews, it, it's, it's good for transparency. I, I understand it's a balancing act. So anyway, I would, I would ask that you maybe reschedule this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Sidman-Lewisdon. I'm looking to you, Rick. I need some leadership from you. I am not asking that Supervisor Cox recuse herself. I'm demanding that she recuse herself. And for the rest of you four, I'm looking at you Supervisor Frazier. I'm looking at you Supervisor Gogan. I'm looking at you. Supervisor Carpenter Harris. I'm a school born member. I'm a site council member. I teach Sunday School with this mouth. I'm a mommy. You guys are neck deep in a mess. And when I hear my fellow citizens say, but there's so many more important things to focus on. And I hear Liam and Heidi talk about water, which is so vital and your work is so important. I feel like right now we're a family about to take a road trip and all the kids are screaming, let's go, let's go on the road trip. But our engine is overheating. The grownups need to say, we can't go on a road trip right now, guys. We can't handle anything else until this gets handled. Those emails were devastating. You must be recused, not only from this issue, but from any item in those emails until there's an investigation. And I agree with Tom Blanco that maybe you should table county council review until there's a third party. And county council review should include an inquiry as to why I have access to about 400 of Jill's emails and other people in this room don't. That's nuts. That's nuts. It's chicanery. It's a lot of words that I'm not going to say here now. But we need to stop with everything else, as important as it is, our water, our mental health services, our behavioral health services, our housing. All of those things are now questioned because of this collusion. And the engine in the car is overheating and we don't get to go on the trip until that is fixed. A lot of people aren't going to stop speaking about this until it's addressed. It's not going to go away just because we pretend that it's not happening. We have an opportunity to uncover a seamy underbelly of corruption that I don't think that it is your intention to be involved in, but you're involved in it. Because people are providing undue influence and they don't care about you. These are not your friends, Supervisor Cox. These people in the emails that are giving you this advice are not your friends. They're not for you. They're not serving you. They're serving their own, their own agendas and they're using you. And I'm sorry for that. And I'm sorry that you're in this situation and nobody's getting any enjoyment out of it. I'm certainly not. Do the right thing, recuse yourself, eliminate any further appearance of impropriety because it's appearing loud. Remove yourself from that, deliver us from that and help us get ready for this road trip and let's go good places.
Thank you. Jeremy Brown.
Hey, good, almost noon, good afternoon, almost noon. Jeremy Brown, Burt Ranch. It really seems like TAA or Jim Underwood really took advantage of you, Jill. And I feel like you've been used. And I would highly suggest that you recuse from participating in the closed agenda item on county council review. Obviously that's for you to consider, but just public optics should go a long ways to guide your decision in that. How come Underwood doesn't have the courage or ability to come and make comments on these things too? Where is he? How come other people from the public come and speak, but he has nothing to say about this? It's, it's such a drain of energy, a black hole of county staff time, of county staff perspective of what leadership can look like and doesn't look like. This is happening under your leadership, regardless of what you did was right or wrong. It's, it's currently under your leadership. You have the ability to direct it in one way or another. Typically, no one responds to public comments and it just kind of gets passed along. But I, I really feel like you should put your neck out there and actually respond to the public today at the end of these public comments about the closed item. And make a comment, make a pledge of what you're going to do or what you're not going to do, but be transparent and be honest. Dig deep in yourself because a lot of people are watching. It's not just the local community. You're going to have assembly members, RCRC, everyone's going to be watching to see what your leadership does or doesn't do in a situation like this. And I'm sure it's incredibly challenging. It's hard for me to sympathize though, because it appears that, you know, you've been sleeping with the enemy, more or less, that you've been there to, yes, you're elected by the people, but you need to know how to use your job to work with county council. The board directs county council. Everyone acts as though county council is some wild herd of Mustangs. But you're supposed to be the Cowboys herding them in and it's your job. As a team, it's not a one person thing. But I hope you make the right choice and I hope the board has the strength and the courage to also stand up for what's right and maintain their integrity in this also. Thank you.
Thank you. Delane? Or maybe she doesn't mean to raise her hand. Steve?
Hi, this is Steve Lyon, Junction City. As a few of the other folks in front of me have said, it seems quite apparent that postponing item 5.2 seems to be the appropriate move right now. Considering that the chairman of the Board of Supervisors has been caught secretly copying and an active litigant and emails with county council, doesn't seem like a great time to have this review under this cloud of suspicion. Let's get this stuff cleared up. I really liked what Catherine Sidman just said a minute ago. Let's get this stuff cleared up so that we can move forward and move forward with certainty that we're making honest, transparent forward moves. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Delane? Delane, can you hear us?
Yeah.
It's your time to speak.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get this. I'm on a Zoom meeting.
Delane? I don't think he realizes.
Her name is Daylene.
Daylene, do you have a comment? Is there anyone on Zoom who would care to make public comment?
I would like to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, Sam, you may.
Okay, I would just like to really reiterate that Ms. Cox should step down. What she did was unethical and it's just a, it's what she's done the entire time. And some of the people that she's communicating with, including Rick up there, should leave as well. Promises made, none kept. You know, it's, and, and y'all are up there crying about the money that the river being high is costing us. How about the farms that were worth millions of dollars that are now worth nothing because no one wants to do business in Trinity County? How many farms did y'all, that I, that I personally built that y'all said, oh, it's worth a million dollars now? Every one of those greenhouses is worth $200,000. What about that lost money? It would be fine to collect taxes on that if you would actually be pro-business, what you profess to be, but she's not. She should leave.
Thank you. I have no other raised hands, no chops. All right. Bring it back to the board and I'm going to make some comments. First of all, I'm going to recount a little bit of history for you regarding item 1.2 on the the previous special meeting agenda. And to answer Shanna, no, you do not have to give a reason to recuse when you go into closed session. On March 23rd, a Public Records Act request was submitted. I've sat and listened to each of your comments. I've heard what you had to say. I have some things to say. And I think that the same decorum that I offered you could be offered in back, in return to me. On March 23rd, a Public Records Act was submitted to the county requesting communications between myself and specific individuals. The request came from an individual in Tecama County who was said to be acting on behalf of an anonymous third party. I was not made aware of that request until April 19th, four weeks later. By April 21st, two days later, the documents which had already been pulled from the county server without my knowledge or opportunity to review, had been supplied to the requester and were back in the hands of at least the other four supervisors. On April 24th, I arrived at the special meeting to learn that those documents, of which I had still not been fully supplied copies, had been added to the backup to a previously published board agenda, which in my understanding is inappropriate and also without my knowledge. The documents included a compilation of my own personal notes and several emails. It soon became evident that others were far more aware of what was happening than myself. And so bewildered, I chose to step back until I could understand what had transpired and what it all meant. And that is why I recused myself from item 1.2 that day, the public employee evaluation of county council. I do not believe that my recusal from this process is appropriate, but in light of the fact that so many of you do, I am happy to recuse off of that item and allow this board whom I trust to go through with that process. I do want to make some comments to my, to the board members about the process, and then I'm happy to leave the room for the process to see if he'll agree that that is appropriate. I would also like to give a little bit of France to you all. And I would encourage you to go back two years through your emails and see what it would feel like to put them in the newspaper or elsewhere. And I understand that I am held to a higher standard because of my position and I accept that. But I want to give a personal apology in public to Carla Avila. She came to the podium on the day that we talked about the cannabis, retail cannabis in the historic district. And Carla is a person I hold dear. And her comments to me that day were out of character for her and painful to me. That email that I wrote expressed pain. Subsequent to that, I called Carla and said, could you and I have a cup of coffee, which lasted a couple of hours? And we both left that meeting with a greater understanding of one another's perspectives. And let us do also recall that when we're talking about retail in, retail cannabis in the historic district, we're talking about an area that because of the setbacks, there's no place that it would work anyway. And there were 36 letters in the backup data of people asking that it be elsewhere in Weaverville instead of the historic district. I visited the new Cali Love store. I visited the new Cali Love store. It is very well done and the owner shared with me that it would never have worked in the historic district because of the parking that she needs, because of the security that she needs, and she's very happy where she is, which is a good fit for all perspectives of Weaverville citizens. As far as other emails there, if I have done something that has not been proprietary or illegal, I will face those consequences. But what I see in this room today is a really one sided view and my goal has been to be balanced. And I know you'll laugh in your minds and your hearts when I say that, but if you will look back at how I have voted, I have not voted against cannabis. You can check the record. There is nothing that I have said, I don't want it here. I have said it's a land use that we have to learn how to balance with other people who also have rights to their land use and it needs to be implemented in a way that is fair and equitable and forward serving to everyone, yourselves, but not just yourselves. I am going to encourage CEO Tet Hill to bring in a third party and do a thorough investigation. And I'm going to encourage that that scope of investigation is quite broad. Because yes, you're going to look into my history, absolutely. But I want to understand why it is that my personal notes didn't get to be looked at and said, this information is incomplete. There are statements in there that yes, I read them and they are scathing because they're incomplete. Because the statement I was making Jake was that there is a way, there's an irreducible minimum in how you report out a closed session. And then there's beyond that. And once I was at that point of discovery, I went beyond that to say, this is the least that you have to do? What is the most that you can do? And at that point, I stopped typing. But with those incomplete thoughts, now those are put out into the public as though that's my view, which it is not. And I believe that this board, when asked, will concur that I have requested more output. I called a closed session item specifically to ask this board on three different closed session items that we had had. I'm not comfortable with just direction given to staff or no action taken. I want to give further comments. I wasn't here to report out the 1.1 item, which Supervisor Lutweller did today with those paragraphs of explanation. And what I would say to you, it was my leadership that brought that into closed session to say, I want more clarity. You can shake your head no, but you can also ask the board members because they were here and you weren't. So yes, to an investigation.
Madam Chair, I would just
Am I saying too much?
Just caution you to not reveal any closed session discussions in your comments.
Thank you.
Since they're not
For that.
Already pre-accomplished and there may be some emotion involved. Just please consider.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate that. All right. With that, we will table item 5.2 for today. And we will go into closed session on item 5.1.
I believe if you recuse, you can't table it. It would have to be the vice chair.
Ha ha. Go Margaret.
You can put him in the waiting room if he won't respond.
Just mute everyone, please.
Are we fully muted now? Thank you. So are you, I heard you say that you now would recuse based on the public input. You're also asking for the item to be tabled or just for it to be recused and we move forward today?
They are asking it to be tabled in light of this and I'm willing to do that. But since I've recused, that will now be your call.
Okay.
And I recommend we make that determination during closed session.
Yes.
Good. There's going to be some discussion involved.
Yeah, I, I will, I will just refer back to the readout that was given at the end of last meeting as well as today, that we've met a number of times to work on the process. We met to formal, to review the survey results of 34 people. We compiled feedback specifically from the board based on all of that that has been delivered to county council and to be discussed today. So that, that process has been underway and that to me is the consideration that I, I agree, let's just talk in closed session about whether we think we're in the right place to move forward or we're not. But I just wanted to be clear where we are in that process. So we would move to handle scrolled back up on my notes. Handle 5.1 and then, then you would recuse yourself and then we would decide about 5.2, correct?
We could do now is just move into closed session and then we can sort that out when we get to it.
Concur.
This meeting is adjourned.
Not adjourned, to closed session.
Into closed session.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a quick break.